Excuse me, there are seats up here. There's, I see, two, four, five, or six seats. If somebody from the back wants to come up, there's seven or eight. Anybody sitting in the foyer there?
If somebody from the back wants to come up, there's seven or eight. Anybody sitting in the foyer there?
I still see six or seven if anybody wants to come up. If not, we're fine with that. Oh.
Still see six or seven if anybody wants to come up. If not, we're fine with that.
Jack, you ready? All right, we're going to call this public hearing to order. Let the record show that supervisors Shafani, Supervisor Fisher, Supervisor Cassiolis, Supervisor Agizio, and Supervisor Barney are in attendance. In addition, our township solicitor, Gretchen Moore, our, um, geez, Assistant Township Manager and, I mean, Parks Director, Jack King. I usually have them listed here. And there's somebody else here. All right, we've got a clerk reporter too. Okay. We have to have some people sworn in, especially people who plan to give actual sworn testimony. Would you please rise for her?
Anyone who's going to speak tonight, please rise and raise your hand to be sworn in place.
Even if you think you might potentially speak. Do you want to swear the testimony you're about to offer would be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
All right, this is another... Rise to swear, because we're the judges here. We're not the testimony. We're not giving it... We're not going to give any... We're not going to give any testimony. Sit down, Mike, please. Um...
Give me a rolling one.
Yeah. All right, Mike. We don't testify here.
You did last time I was here.
No, we don't testify. It's not... An opinion isn't testifying.
Oh, is this a hearing?
Yes, it's a hearing.
Did the voice anything?
Well, listen, we'll listen to what I know. We'll listen to the comments we get, and as you've seen, this is going to be the second meeting. We're going to have a third meeting too, because there are some changes that we've already made from what we planned on propose tonight. We've made some changes based on the comments, so we have to have another hearing. The law says that if we make substantial hearings, uh, changes after a hearing, we can't vote on it till we have another hearing to bring up at a public meeting those proposed changes. And then we have to give our Washington County Planning Commission and our Cecil Township Planning Commission 30 days' notice to review it and comment on it before we can have a vote on it. So you'll see there's some significant changes. Jack's going to show a map that we had from the last meeting to this meeting. We have another one we're showing you, because it's been ideas that we factored in, and we think it may end up being a better ordinance, but again, my board has to review it, and we have to take comments at another hearing. So you have a chance, once you see this one next month, to make comments. I want to mention one other thing, though. We've got a lot of comments, mostly emails. They're kind of a standard email from a lot of our residents in plans, and all of them are asking for a... They're asking the township to put a 2,500-foot distance from protected structures. We have to follow the law. The municipal planning code tells us that we can't ban business from the township, so we cannot outright ban drilling, but we also can't pass distances where they can't possibly drill anyhow. And we have maps that show 1,500 feet, which we're going to show you, that there are a few spots that would be open for drilling. We go to 1,600 or 1,700 feet, and they're gone. And the law says we can't ban them, so that's effectively banning them by zoning, and it's against the law. Wait, the... Listen, the board still has to follow the law. It doesn't matter if we'd like it to be 2,500 feet, we can't do that. You're going to see the maps, and just look at them, and you'll see another map tonight that has even less spots, and it may be workable.
Hang on, hang on one second. Here's what I'm going to ask, and I know I'm not the chairman, I'm overstepping. We want to hear from everyone tonight, but we want to do this in a way that's orderly and organized. So step to the microphone, we will hear you out, but please don't yell out from the audience, and please keep in mind that we're video recording, and we want to catch what you're saying on video recording. So please, we will answer your questions, but step to the microphone in an orderly way and do it. Thank you.
We are going to have our professionals that are lined up to give some testimony first. But I was saying about the maps you're going to see, we just cannot disobey the law. Now, if you have an issue with that law that comes from the state, then, I mean, you have an issue with our state legislators to change that, but we have to follow it. Nobody on this board can vote for something that violates the law. So you'll see that at 1,500 feet, some spots work, but again, we're working on it.
Hold on, hold on. Please just wait a second and just ask that question.
So who do you have planned on first for testimony? I don't know, you can introduce them. I don't know who they are. You want to step up?
My name is Will Thornton, T-H-O-R-N-T-O-N.
I don't know that they can hear you. Can you adjust the microphone?
Sure. I'm usually too loud, so. My name is Will Thornton. I'm a mechanical engineer and acoustical engineer.
I don't think they can hear you.
Can you hold the microphone? That might help.
My name is Will Thornton. So I'm an acoustical engineer. It's a specialty discipline of mechanical engineering, T-H-O-R-N-T-O-N. So I was retained by Cecil Township a number of months ago to perform in a series of independent noise monitoring studies on two existing wells, one in the fracking stage and one in the drilling stage, basically to determine whether or not those operations were violating the existing Cecil Township oil and gas noise ordinance. And, long story short, the noise being emitted from those two operations did not violate the letter of the ordinance, but what I found was that there were clear deficiencies and loopholes in the ordinance, and that it simply wasn't sufficient to effectively regulate and control the kind of noise and vibration being emitted by those operations. So as an addendum to my report, I actually issued an addendum and provided a critique of the existing oil and gas noise ordinance and made some high-level recommendations to make improvements to that, to make it more effective at regulating oil and gas noise, protecting the community norms, and trying to regulate and limit noise reaching residential receptors and vibration. And in essence, what I found was the metrics and methodologies being used in the ordinance were insufficient to capture oil and gas noise. If you've been around some of the well pads, most of the noise being emitted is low-frequency, deep bass sounds, and the metrics used in the existing ordinance do not capture that by design. And a second deficiency is that the existing ordinance uses the current ambient conditions to establish a baseline above which noise emitters are allowed to generate noise, but there's a loophole in that ambient noise study where oil and gas operations can, instead of performing a comprehensive noise study, they can just simply take an assumed ambient noise level of 55 dBa. And 55 dBa, as it turns out, is significantly louder than your existing ambient conditions, especially in your residential areas, especially at night. So a couple of recommendations that I made was that the ordinance be changed to use a metric that better captures low-frequency noise, and also recommended that the... A comprehensive, science-based ambient noise study be performed, where monitoring was performed according to industry best practices. And when I say industry best practice, I don't mean oil and gas best practices, I mean acoustics and noise control engineering best practices. So I issued a number of recommendations, I think, to the supervisors to augment and improve the existing ordinance. I made recommendations to change what's already in place, and I think some higher-level recommendations that I've encouraged to be enacted over time. Some of the more simple improvements of the existing oil and gas ordinance were intended to be able to be implemented quickly without extensive studies and time delays.
Gretchen, I can assume that the recommendations he gave us...
Time out, hold on. That was 2 minutes and 55 seconds. We're allowing expert testimony for up to 10 minutes.
What timer did you set, Darlene? We're in for 10 minutes for the professionals. 10 minutes for the professionals.
Eight more minutes, seven more minutes?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
For what it's worth, I think I've said what I needed to say at a high level. Everything else will be a digression.
Hey, wait, he needs your attention, please. Gretchen, I can assume that the recommendations he gave that you factored in on this proposal that we have. A new proposal?
Right, so the board has the current version, which includes...
Hold on, timeout. Can we clarify something really quick for the timer? Because it shouldn't be running while we're speaking? Like, I don't, to be honest, I'm... Okay. I just want to clarify that. Go ahead.
So the board has the current ordinance, which as of today includes some additional tweaks from Mr. Thornton. As he mentioned, there are several ways the board could address it. One is to do a community-wide ambient study. That would take a little bit more time and investment, and I'm not sure that's something the board wants to do. However, the current ordinance, draft ordinance, does include an ambient measurement, not an ambient or 55. It is purely an ambient, and we added some more criteria in terms of how to measure that ambient, but the ambient would be measured whenever there is, as part of the application for a well site. So it would happen each time, as opposed to doing the community-wide, setting an ambient level, which is another option that Mr. Thornton proposed. So it would be an ambient, and then there would be decibels above the ambient during drilling times. I think at this point, we're at six. I think that you have to six decibels.
It's a sliding scale, depending on how long those exceedances last, but six and 10-decibel exceedances would sometime...
Six over a period of how long?
So let me back up a little bit. One of the things, when we talk about decibels, it's not a linear scale, it's a logarithmic scale. And so it tends to be, it's not intuitive when we relate that to how loud things sound for people. So general rules of thumb, a three-decibel increase is generally the smallest change the average person perceives. A six-decibel increase is clearly perceptible to the average person, and a 10-decibel increase is typically described as being twice as loud. And so the sliding scale, I think, that was based off of the existing ordinance and tweaked off the existing ordinance, is that a six-decibel increase was allowed for some short period of time out of a given hour, and 10-decibels could be allowed for a much shorter time out of a given period of an hour.
So who in the ordinance is responsible? Gretchen's question's more for you, for monitoring this. Is it up to us? Is it up to the company? Like, that's my only concern, because obviously, like, you agree or disagree, like, when you went up there, I wanted your honest opinion, like, it was loud, and it was, like you said, you used the word loopholes.
Absolutely. I mean, the whole reason I issued the addendum, it was beyond the scope, was that there was noise and vibration clearly impacting people beyond norms, beyond what's appropriate for a residential setting, but clearly permitted under the existing noise ordinance. So some of the most easily implementable recommendations, I try to close those loopholes in the short order. One of the higher-level recommendations I made is best practice in community and environmental noise is generally to set absolute limits. They're not a function of ambient or the industry. We set absolute limits, kind of like speed limits. A certain speed is safe on a certain road. Certain noise levels are acceptable for residential activity. They won't cause sleep deprivation, sleep interruption, speech interference, and things like that. So I strongly advocate moving towards absolute noise limits, not relative noise ordinance limits. But tweaking the existing ordinance was a way of fixing some of the most glaring deficiencies and loopholes in short order.
I guess my question, though, for Gretchen, is the issue we run into now is that it says, okay, if there's a noise complaint, it's filed with the township and/or the company. That company then has 24 hours to respond, then they have 10 days to monitor. That's a potentially... And then there is a period of time after that in which they have to get the results. You're talking about a potential period of weeks while the residents are forced to live with those noise levels. I guess, is there, like, a way to say if it happens multiple times, if there's multiple infractions, can we write that into there? I just don't want to see the can continually kicked down the road.
Sure, and the way it's currently written is it is a complaint-driven process. However, the township always reserves the right, and it's included in there now, that if they want to come in and do a measurement at any time, they can do it as well independently. So, you know, we can continue to look at it and see if maybe we can shorten the timeframes for response to the complaint. I don't want to put too much onus on the township for regular measurements, but the township has that ability to bring someone in, and I know Mr. Thornton was brought in fairly quickly the last time there was a complaint, and he did his independent assessment, probably more quickly than the operator did.
Consequence isn't the right word. I don't know what the word I'm looking for is, but like, what's the... Like, what's the result? Like, okay, so we have somebody come in, they test, they've exceeded the noise limits, then what?
It's a zoning ordinance, so it's a notice of violation, or you have every other equitable and legal remedies available to you for things that are ongoing, so you can go to court and seek equitable relief or other relief from the court. But this is under a zoning ordinance, so it is a notice of violation, and it's the notice of violation process.
Right, so it's on the township and the taxpayers to essentially take it to court?
If there isn't compliance, I mean, there could be voluntary compliance, you know.
Sorry.
Sort of the issue you're talking about is one of the reasons I really, it is generally best practice in our industry, is to go to absolute limits. It really simplifies violations, compliance measurements, the time span to identify exceedances. It's a much more simple process. That's one of the reasons I really strongly advocate, over time, going to absolute limits.
Yeah, just given that we know it's a problem. You've testified here tonight that it's a problem. We've, the majority of this board has experienced that it is, in fact, a problem specifically at these distances. I just want to make sure that there's a remedy, that there's a solution other than having to spend taxpayer money to take it to court, or we have to, we have no choice but to push it farther away. Sorry. I said, "or," but we have no choice but to push it farther away to avoid these circumstances.
How do you differentiate what the noise is? If it's a bird, if it's something coming from the well pads, how do you tell where that noise is coming from? I mean, if you get, you know, a loud squawking bird that's sitting right by where the microphone or whatever testing equipment you use, how do you differentiate that from times in and times out?
So I often use analogy of DNA. So any noise coming from any industrial or mechanical operation has a very clear frequency fingerprint, a noise fingerprint, if you will, DNA. A internal combustion engine, or a radiator, or whatever emits sound with certain frequency spectrum. As that propagates, it doesn't change. It gets louder or quieter, but it does, the fingerprint doesn't change. So we can identify using frequency analysis of the noise receiver what the source is. You can listen to the audio recordings to exclude birds chirping or pecking on the windscreen and things like that. So there's a number of objective methodologies that we can definitively say that this noise event at this receiver was a result of a well pad or some other specific source. It's highly objective.
And I will say, one of the major changes in this ordinance that Mr. Thornton suggested obviously was moving to a DBC-based scale. Originally, I had in DBA and DBC, but as he explained to me, DBC is actually inclusive of DBA, but not vice versa. So if you just have a DBC measurement, it will measure both DBC and DBA. The DBC being the lower-level frequency that you kind of feel more, that has been more of the issue with the well pads.
Correct.
Any other questions from the board members? Do you have anything else to add?
Not at this time.
Appreciate you coming tonight.
Thank you for your time.
Hello. So my name is Dr. Jim Fabisak, F-A-B-I-S-A-K, and I'm an associate professor at the University of Pittsburgh School of Public Health, and I'm also the director of that school's Center for Healthy Environments and Communities. I am not a resident of Cecil Township, but I am here by invitation, essentially representing the team of Pitt scientists who recently completed a series of epidemiological health studies focused on unconventional natural gas development.
Excuse me, I was going to ask you, can you slow down a little bit?
Okay. I do have a written copy I can submit as well for the record, but, okay.
But everybody here wants to hear it too.
All right, that's fine. I'll slow down. Epidemiological health studies focused on unconventional natural gas development and other environmental hazards in southwest Pennsylvania. I'm not here to advocate one way or another on any of the proposed regulations or ordinances being considered, but simply to provide a summary overview of our research findings in the spirit of informed and data-based decision-making. The study was funded by the Pennsylvania Department of Health, led by Doctors Evelyn Talbott and Janine Buchananich from the University of Pittsburgh. I am a co-investigator on that research team. The studies were initiated in 2020 and were completed in 2023. The study information was collected from records corresponding to the time period from the year 2010 to 2020, and focused on the eight-county region in southwest Pennsylvania, namely Allegheny, Armstrong, Eber, Butler, Fayette, Green, Washington, and Westmoreland. These studies were tasked with looking at three different health outcomes: adverse birth outcomes, which include low birth weight, and premature birth, being born too early; severe exacerbations or worsening of asthma in people that had physician-diagnosed asthmatic disease; and three, the incidence of several childhood cancers, including leukemia, lymphoma, brain cancers, and bone cancers. Depending on the health outcome of interest, the overall study design was what we call a retrospective cohort or case-control studies, which in simplest terms identifies groups of people living at varying distances from and different densities to unconventional natural gas wells, and asks the question of whether the chance of any of the specific diseases that I mentioned were different as a function of that density or distance. These are standard epidemiological methods. We identified 185,000 births from the study period from the Pennsylvania Department of Health birth records, 490 cases of childhood cancer from the Pennsylvania Department of Health Cancer Registry, and greater than 46,000 cases of asthma exacerbations through the UPMC Health System. Asthma exacerbations were defined in multiple ways: worsening of asthma that required an increase in steroid medication, emergency room visit for asthma, or hospitalization for asthma. Well locations and activity metrics were obtained from data from the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection Records. The most significant findings of these studies include, with asthma exacerbations, people with asthma living close to active wells during the production phase but not other phases had an increased chance, about four to five times greater, of having their asthma get worse compared to those living further away, greater than 10 miles. This was consistent over all three ways in which we defined an asthma exacerbation, and was striking and that could still be observed within the 10-mile buffer zone. Childhood cancer, the chances of a child developing lymphoma were five to sevenfold greater when living within one mile of a well compared to children living with no wells within five miles. Data suggests the highest risk was for those living the closest and with the highest density of activity. No relationship to other cancers was observed. Birth outcomes, living close to unconventional drilled wells was associated with about a 20- to 40-gram reduction in average birth weight, which by itself is probably not clinically significant, but could represent a shift in the distribution of birth weights, such as a larger percentage of babies might now meet the definition of small for gestational age. It's important to note that these studies do have some limitations. These studies demonstrate associations between diseases and potential hazards, but are insufficient to prove causation. They would likely require more intensive prospective studies. They do not identify the specific hazardous agent associated with the wells, such as air emissions, water contamination, excess noise, or stress, which might be associated with the health effect. And because of methodological limitations, the study is basically based on the assumption that all wells are created equal. However, data from other studies suggest that well activity, emission levels, and frequency of accidents or spills does indeed vary greatly between different sites. In summaries, these studies did find significant associations between residential proximity to fracking activities and increased risk for several untoward health effects. These findings are consistent with what has been observed in several other independent studies, and I hope these results would be useful in your consideration of the issues at hand. I thank the Board of Supervisors for extending the invitation to speak, and I would be available to answer questions that any of the supervisors may have, although I realize you want to keep the meeting going so they can answer here from those residents who would be most impacted.
We have a couple of questions.
Sorry. So, thank you for being here tonight. We greatly appreciate it. I guess my question is, we often hear from people that this study, not people, from industry supporters, that this study has been debunked. Has there been any other studies that have been, I'm not a doctor, but have been compared to or have done the same things as your study did that came up with that, a different answer than you, than your study did? Sorry, can you stop talking?
Sure. There have been other studies done, particularly in the eastern part of the state, which have found, in many ways, similar results. There might be slight differences in the magnitude of the effects, et cetera, but there have been other studies that have found increases in asthma exacerbation, for example. Some studies are inconsistent in terms of effects on birth weight, but there are some that say there is, there are some that say there aren't. I think that's a small effect, but doesn't necessarily debunk the soundness of the study in any way.
Thank you. So specific to asthma and childhood cancer, you're saying there have, specifically, there have been no studies that are contrary to what your study found, correct?
No studies that have been contrary. The other, very few studies have looked at childhood cancer. The only study that I know found a relationship with leukemia, defining leukemia slightly different than we did, because clinically it's defined as acute myelogenous leukemia or chronic myelogenous leukemia. They found a relationship with leukemia, we did not. Our relationship was with lymphoma. Importantly, those are both cancers of the blood system, the white blood cells, so from a biological plausibility, the same target organ would be essentially affected by whatever is producing that cancer.
Thank you.
That makes sense.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions on the board? Frank or... Gretchen, did you have anything to... See, he's helping us with that ordinance, I think. We will be able to, anything you need to ask him?
No, we haven't chatted yet.
Okay, all right.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Jack, did you start a queue? Did you have a list? No, wait, wait, before it might stop. Wait, Jack, hold off a second. Gretchen reminded me, we do have a new proposed map that our board has just seen, but we want to at least show it, because it's under consideration. And, you know, our board will comment on it. Could you bring up the, first of all, show the 1,000-foot map that we had originally Can you make it a little bit bigger?
Is this the 1,000 foot?
This is 1,000 foot.
Yes, yeah. The hatched areas are the areas where it could be potential drill sites. That doesn't mean the drilling companies would want to use all these or be able to use all of these or be able to lease them, but that's, for our ordinance, if we have to meet the intent of the law, we have to give them some areas to drill. So at 1,000 foot, as opposed to our current 500-foot ordinance, these ones would work under that 1,000-foot ordinance proposal. I don't know if you, I hope you can see it clear enough. Can you make it any bigger, Jack?
Yes.
Yeah, even if you move it around once, Jack, it gets one area bigger. You can look at it for a minute.
It's on our website, right?
But he's making it bigger. And it will be on our website, you'll be able to look at it.
It already is.
It already is.
All right. If we go ahead with a map like this, we will end up putting streets on it, so you can zoom in on your own areas, and you'll see their street addresses. I think we can populate it with structures on it. You'll see all the black dots. No. Yep, it's coming up next. All right, so, okay, but that's what, that was a current proposal, I mean, the proposal we've had from last month to this month. Recently, we worked on another one that I want Jack to put up. I think at most, it would have impact on the residents, like in the new plans, like McConnell Trails and Traditions of America.
It would impact or would not?
It'd impact well for them.
Impact well?
Yeah, they'll see.
And it would be beneficial?
Right, you'll see whenever you can zoom in on those areas. Right now, this was shown, since there are five wells on the western, the northwestern part of the township, and even the part of the southern part of the town. part of the township, and even the part of the southern part of the township, there's five well pads that we feel can take care of that area without having any additional available areas over on this part of the township. Now, if we look at the eastern and the southern part of the township, there are no well pads there, and there's no, it's a more concentrated area, but we try to find something, not going by a specific distance of, say, 1,500 or 1,000 or 500 foot, we just plotted areas of ground. They don't follow property lines, and they don't follow zoning lines, they're just areas that, if you zoom in, Jack, to, just say McConnell Trails. He'll zoom in in a second to McConnell Trails.
Can I simplify what you're saying a little?
No, no, wait, just, zoom in a little bit more, Jack. Can you see the distances out there on that map? Wait, wait. Can you see the distances out there on that map? Slide it down a little bit, Jack. No, no, I meant, that's, yeah, up.
Sorry, it's hanging a little bit. It's ticking on me.
It's ticking. Slide the other way. All right, stop there, we can see Georgetown Estates right there. Slide it a little bit, Jack. There's an area there, area number five, it's shown it can be 1,700 feet from the nearest structure, Georgetown Estates. So, as you get further away, obviously, it gets further, but that's, the tightest distance would be 1,700 feet. Jack, slide upward like that. No, the other way. Down below, that 1,802 square, linear feet, you can see Traditions of America. And that area number four, if it was a potential drill site, it might be shown from that property line of TOA and not a particular house, but as you get further away from that well pad into the, or potential well pad into the development, you'll see it gets further and further away. So, I guess the nearest residents in there to be impacted could be 1,800 and some feet. No, just, wait, we'll get to that. You can ask questions after. Jack, go try to find McConnell Trails there. We'll show you.
Can everybody quiet down so that Tom can explain?
Yeah, so McConnell chose its way to the left of this site here. So, I mean, we didn't even put a distance, that might meet that 2,500 feet that people had been hoping we could get. And this, this is the, what plan is this here? My map was labeled Traditions of America.
But that one isn't labeled.
Jack, right before the word Hendersonville, what plan would that be? Is that the overlook?
Henderson, yeah. Overlooks, that's not the overlook. Hendersonville, because that's 79 right there.
That's, well, you can see where Hendersonville is, so, this one here.
That's, well, you can see Hendersonville. This one here. That's why I centered on.
That's Mission Hill. This is Mission Hill.
Tom, what I'm circling is McConnell's Trails, right there.
Okay, yeah, okay, all right. So, if you're from McConnell Trails, if you can see that where he's circling, it's, at distance, whatever it is, we try to show the distance.
I know you all want to talk to each other, but just bear with us one second and listen to what Tom's saying, and then maybe we can take a.
All right. Well, I'm just trying to pin it down. What other plan we had there? The, like Cabana Beach.
Cabana Beach?
Yeah. Yeah, Cherry Brook. And that's how I know it by. It's further to the north.
Yeah.
No, Cherry Brook is right where that arrow is up at the top. No, this is it here.
Yeah, that's why.
So, slide to the, slide to the left, Jack, to the east. Where that arrow, wait, slide south now. No, slide down, Jack. The other.
This is Cherry Brook, right here, in this area here.
No, no, wait, slide south, Jack, I mean, the other way, I'm sorry, the other way. Keep going, yeah, right by that arrow. No, no. Okay, that one, that plan is labeled. So, that's Cherry Brook, if you're from that area. We have an area by number two, that's the Peters Township line, it's 1,492 feet from the nearest house. Well, we see 1,500 feet from Third Street in Montour, I mean, in Lawrence. So, that probably meets the 2,500, 2,000 feet for a school in Lawrence. But this is just a work in progress, we're just trying to find areas that meet the law, allow areas for drilling, and yet get the furthest distance we can from our concentrated areas. And again, we said, we have many pads in the western part of the township, but this area we have to concentrate on, because we can't ban them from there, and yet it's a concentrated area. I don't think we have any areas like Mount Pleasant or Donegal Township where they could probably reach 2,500 foot easy. So, this isn't, this is going to be a map in progress also, but it's just the idea of what we're working on. That's why I said we're going to have to have another meeting, because, you know, we're really looking at this for the first time, and we've got to, I use the word tweak, but we've got to work it. So, I mean, that's why I just wanted to show you that, that we're, it's a work in progress, and we're going to have another hearing once we work on this more.
Can Gretchen explain the methodology?
Yeah, okay. So, let me just take a moment to explain the methodology of this particular map. So, I think if you were here at the first hearing, you saw that there were many different ways you can address the sighting of oil and gas. You could do it by a traditional overlay district based on distance, which is what Cecil Township has historically done. It was a 500-foot distance for protected structures and 2,500 foot for schools, that's the current. We presented a 1,000-foot setback overlay, we also presented a 1,500-foot setback overlay at the last hearing. That's one method to approach it. You can also approach it by zoning district, and there was some discussion at the last hearing about zoning district. What you're looking at here is a third approach, and it's a different approach, it's one that was implemented in Murraysville and was done successfully and stood up a challenge in court. And to do it like this, you basically have to feed data into a system and make some determinations, and then plot things out, and then go back and, you know, keep tweaking it. So, I just want to explain to you the factors that went into finding these particular sighting areas, and then how we got here. So, these are the factors that were included, and then I'll go through the process. So, the factors included is that the township engineer took into account that five well pads have already been developed in the township with the ability to extract resources from a vast area based upon current drilling technology, which can drill lateral wells up to five miles. Another factor was that the existing pads appear to be able to access most of the township, with the exception of the southeastern portion of the township. Another factor is that well site, well pad development should avoid existing high-density residential villages, such as Muse, Lawrence, and Hendersonville. Well pad development should avoid newly developed high-density residential developments, such as Traditions of America, Silver Creek, McConnell Trails, along with other neighborhoods, such as Timber Run, Pristine Fields, Mayfair Meadows, and Oak Brook. Finally, if parcels are large enough, property owners could allow development even if an extru, even if a structure exists on their property. So, those were the preliminary factors. With that in mind, the township engineer then went through this process. He started with, all parcels 10 acres or greater were determined based on mapping. 10 acres was selected to isolate parcels large enough to have a primary use, such as a home or other building, and still be large enough to develop a well pad. Next, all parcels that intersected existing well bores and well pads were removed. All parcels within 1,000 feet of existing well bores and well pads were removed. Any parcels that intersect with a storm sewer line were removed. Aerial imagery was reviewed to remove anything that could not further develop due to existing infrastructure, such as large buildings and parking lots. Next, anything north-northwest of Miller's Run Road or State Route 50 was removed. Anything within 1,000 feet of obvious major subdivisions and neighborhoods was removed. Then, a review of aerial mapping was completed for areas that could be accessed and drilled to or from the existing pads, which were then removed. Anything west-northwest of I-79 was removed. The buffer around neighborhoods and subdivisions was increased from 1,000 feet to 1,500 feet. He then removed areas that would have fitment issues based upon a typical well pad of 400 feet by 500 feet. Any remaining areas less than four acres, which is a typical well pad size, were then removed. He added a 1,000-foot buffer from residential structures that would be directly impacted, including landowners and neighbors, and removed these from the potential area. And he then went through those last four steps that I read to remove, move any remaining areas that would have pad fitment issues. So, that is the process. That's the third way to address this, that's one of the ways that the board is currently considering. This particular map has not yet been formally advertised. Again, if you were at the first meeting, you heard that this is a process, the board has been taking into account comments, they've been thinking creatively about ways to address this to make sure they get the decision that's right for Cecil Township. It's not one-size-fits-all, they have to figure out what's right for Cecil Township. So, this is the latest approach. Again, we didn't necessarily make up this approach, it was an approach that Murraysville adopted, and we followed, basically, their scientific approach to how, to figure out, you know, these, these areas that would then become an overlay. So, that's what you're looking at right now, and.
And as I think it was said, it doesn't follow any zoning lines, and it doesn't follow any property lines, it's just, as the aerial map was fed information, it just kept shrinking them to a certain area, and this is what's left that met all that criteria. It's like I said, it's not zoning, and it's not property lines yet.
And my understanding is also, by reading the comprehensive plan, the comprehensive plan also fed into, you know, the analysis of where drilling would be more appropriate and less appropriate.
All right. So, having heard that, again, so if you were here about your concerns about being 500-foot or 1,000-foot from some of your plans, this is a process that we're working on, and it looks like it's working in your favor, so I might take that into consideration in your comments. So, now we'll start. If any citizens who signed up already, if you want to, I'd like to start a queue up there, please, so that we can move it along, and please respect the three minutes, everybody is here, has a chance to talk if they want. No, no.
Yes, after you give your name, your address, and she doesn't ask you again, as soon as you start to talk, the three minutes starts with this time.
But please give your name for the record. Anyway, we, we have a speaker here, so please listen to him, please give him some courtesy.
Mr. Chairman, good evening, my name is Tim Kamus, I reside in Cecil Township in the Overlook at South Point community. I currently am the Secretary of the Board of Directors at the Overlook at South Point Homeowners Association. The Overlook is an R2-zoned community consisting of 364 housing units. On April 3rd, our president and several residents of our community attended a hearing concerning the proposed changes to the oil and gas ordinances. Shortly after the hearing, on behalf of our Board of Directors, the president sent an email to our entire community. Our message, "After listening to the testimony and hearing the results of studies and other information that was provided, we support increasing the current 500-foot setback to 2,500 feet or the maximum allowable distance for residential communities and our schools. We believe increasing both setbacks is critically important to the well-being of our children and the overall quality of life in our community. If our children spend roughly one-third of their time at school and the rest of their time at home, why would we not protect them in the same manner at school as at their homes? The oil and gas industry is very important to many in our township, county, and state. We are not proposing anything other than recommended minimum setbacks for residential and school areas to protect our families from having to endure the things that our neighbors are experiencing in the township right now. After sending our message to the community, we have received only positive responses in support of this position. As HOA board members, we're elected to look out for the health and welfare of our community. Likewise, we believe that when the Cecil Township Board of Supervisors approved ours and other large residential developments in the township, that they also understood that by welcoming the addition of new families into the township, the Board of Supervisors would need to address changes that come along with the addition of large residential communities. As a matter of fact, the current Cecil Township website states, and I quote, "Continuing to grow." "The township continues to grow and thrive. It is no wonder why generations of families and newcomers call Cecil home." Unquote. I'm proud to call Cecil home. My wife and her family moved to Cecil Township in 1969, and after 32 years of federal law enforcement service took us to multiple cities and states, we chose to move back to Cecil Township five years ago to retire. Unfortunately, there may not be much that can be done for the residents who suffer from the existing setbacks, but we thank the board for looking into it and wanting to learn from it, and we strongly support and encourage you to make necessary corrections for the future. I thank you."
Tim, I hope you see that, I hope you see that we're working towards that.
I do, thank you. Thank you for the hearing.
I hope you see that we're working towards that.
I do, thank you. Thank you for the hearing.
Hello, good evening, my name is Wes Batchelder, B-A-T-C-H-E-L-D-E-R, 418. Hello, good evening, my name is Wes Batchelder. I wanted to address the board today, I was unable to attend the April 3rd meeting, but I did watch the recording, all two hours and 49 minutes of it, twice. And I appreciate the board's open and honest answering of questions. The board laid out very clearly how much authority the board does have. Once drilling comes in, there's very little that this board can do. We heard from Mr. Thornton, the noise measurements were conforming with the requirements, even though there's loopholes. Even if they were non-conforming, there's nothing this board can do to compel range to change. You only have a sliver of authority encouraging you use that authority to implement these larger setbacks from protected structures. I applaud you for the third, fourth version, whichever one this is. Please keep going. Final question I have for every voting board member, do any of you have a financial interest in the outcome of this ordinance or any other potential conflict of interest?
Listen, all of our board members' emails and addresses, okay. She does. All of our board members have their either phone numbers or emails available, you've got to ask them individually, that's not a piece of township business.
Okay. Supervisor Barney, do you have any conflict of interest?
Listen, okay.
Supervisor Barney has confirmed a conflict of interest. Supervisor Chafoney, do you have a conflict of interest?
Pardon me? You're not going to question board members here. I said you can contact them individually.
I can question them individually.
We want to answer, we can answer. If we want to answer, we don't have to answer.
Supervisor Barney has already confirmed a conflict of interest.
I'm saying, we're not going to have questions here about board members.
Supervisor Chafoney, do you have a conflict of interest? Or can your silence be confirmed as agreeing that you have a conflict of interest?
Who's going to be next? Come on, if that's it, all you have, then we're going to move on to the next person. You're not, you're not going to.
Why can't I ask if there's a conflict of interest?
Because that's my procedure here, you're not going to question board members. Who's next? That's it.
I believe two board members have a financial stake in the outcome of this ordinance. I would like to, I would like to have that answered.
And if you believe that, that's fine. You can question anybody individually, that's not a matter for our township business here.
I think that, I think the Cecil residents.
It doesn't matter, I have the stake here.
Would love to know that.
I want the next person to come up, you need to.
Okay, thank you for your time. Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. Let me ask that my three minutes not start because I have a tough last name to spell. If Dr. Lee... Okay. Dr. Lee Patouye, P-A-T-O-U-I-L. See? Okay. There you go. Dr. Lee Patouye, my wife and I live at 209 Liberty Boulevard in Traditions of America, 55-plus community. As background, my dad was a college professor who taught me at a young age about the importance of research and data-driven decision-making, and we heard about that tonight. I went on to earn a PhD from the University of Pittsburgh and embrace these same principles throughout my 45-year career. At last Cecil Board meeting, there were a handful of TOA residents in attendance. That evening, we formed a steering committee, and we went to work because we needed to understand more about the issues being discussed. Supportive supervisors are being commended for having these meetings and for encouraging residents to share our views on these setbacks. So, our committee and our fellow residents reached out to key stakeholders in an effort to get up to speed as soon as possible and in a short amount of time. Specifically, we engaged in conversation with Cecil Township, TOA corporate leadership, Range Resources. In fact, six of our steering committee members last week took a tour. And throughout the last month, we've learned a lot about the industry. It employs 10 million people, and 79% of this nation's energy comes from fossil fuels. We reached out to our fellow residents. The steering committee conducted two informational meetings, attended by 170 people. At these meetings, we all learned a lot from each other. A petition was developed. 188 people have signed that, and that petition calls for a setback between 2,000 and 2,500 feet. You'll hear more about the petition shortly. A survey was created and sent to our residents, really in an effort to hear from them directly. Today, we have 210 homes at TOA. 99 people responded in a four-day period. Let me share some survey highlights. 91% of the respondents reported a 2,500-foot setback. 84% of the survey respondents reported a 2,000-foot setback. The attendance from our fellow residents tonight speaks volumes about their interest in this topic. Would the residents of TOA South Point please stand? Okay, thank you very much. Folks, it was certainly gratifying to see that 90% of the residents who responded supported the work of our steering committee. As we look to the future and based upon extensive research, a strong case can be made to not locate drilling paths near any residential neighborhoods. At the end of the day, residents of TOA South Point have invested in our homes here in Cecil Township and really enjoy Traditions of America. Most of us feel like this will be our forever home on earth. For the most part, we don't plan on moving. Being a 55-plus community, we want peace of mind during this phase of our lives and don't want the possibility of a drill pad with related health issues adjacent to or near our community, either now or in the future. Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, let me give you a copy of the survey results.
We might not be able to meet your expectations, but we are working towards that, and I hope you understand that.
Thanks for listening, and let's do the right thing.
Good evening. My name is Teresa Feeny, F-E-E-N-Y. My address is 602 President's Drive, Cannonsburg, Traditions of America. My husband and I are new seven-month residents of Cecil Township. We built this home to be our last home. We love it here. I am a registered nurse of 48 years in Houston, Texas, where I practice. First of all, I would like to thank every board member for their time and efforts in considering a further setback for all residents of Cecil. Secondly, I would like to thank every resident of Traditions of America who are here tonight. Your presence speaks volumes. Very briefly, I would like to speak on...
I'm sorry, can I pause you for one second? Jack, it's echoing. The video recording is echoing. I don't think that's what it is. I know, I'm not sure. It's back there.
It's back there.
Yeah. Okay, go ahead, continue. I'm so sorry.
Okay.
I wanted to hear what you were saying, not focus on the echo.
Yeah, it's far. Me too, to hear my voice.
Yeah, I'm sure. Yeah, I'm sorry. Go ahead, continue.
Very briefly, I would first like to speak on behalf of all the aging residents of Cecil Township on how aging affects our immune system. The bottom line with aging is that our immune system is just not as robust as it used to be. As a consequence, it takes longer for the body to figure out when you are ill. Once detected, it takes longer for the immune system to deal with, as there are fewer white blood cells to respond, and your body starts losing the race between viruses and bacteria. You get sick more often, illnesses are more severe, and you recover from them more slowly.
I know, just pause for one second. We might need to shut down the live stream and just record it and post it.
Jack, can you do that?
Can you just not... Can you talk loud and try? Yeah, just try for a second.
No, that's not going to work. No. They won't be able to hear back there. Jack, can you do something about that?
I don't think that's what it is. It's... Yeah, yeah.
Yes, there is.
Jack, shut the doors and just... Sorry.
That makes a difference.
As long as you can hear us.
There's a microphone out in the foyer out there. Stay out there, Jack, for a second after you close it, so we can hear you tell... Good start, and we'll see if they can hear you.
Yes, please. Oh, no. Oh, you're doing great, sorry. You're doing phenomenal. Keep going.
Hang with me.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Finally, I would like to conclude with my own personal testimony and give you a little bit of my background. I am the proud daughter of a Union pipe bidder who's 40-plus years' career included building oil and gas refineries at the energy capital of the world in Houston, Texas, working with the names we all use today and recognize: Shell, Conoco, Texaco, ExxonMobil. He worked on all of them. He endured burns, cuts, and even electrocution at work. There were no OSHA standards in those days. It was very dirty and dangerous work. I had the opportunity to spend over three hours last week with Range Resources visiting the Augustine well pad in Cecil and the processing plant in Mount Pleasant. It was a flashback to me to see my father working in those hazardous refineries as I watched the pipes being lifted mechanically up and to the 16-story Augustine rig above. Let me be clear, I have such great respect for all laborers who work in these capacities. It put food on our table and a roof over our heads, thanks to my dad. In addition to that, I married a man who has spent his entire 40-plus-year career in the petrochemical industry near those same refineries my dad built in Houston. As a wife, I knew the dangers Jim encountered every day, as he experienced his own incidents at the plant, including having to shelter in place numerous times. Jim, thank you for your dedication and all industri... Jim, thank you for your dedication and all the laborers of that industry in this country that provides products for all of us to use in our daily lives. Thank you for providing a home for us from it.
And she had a little more... Yeah, yeah.
In conclusion, I also have the utmost respect for all those who labor in this energy industry and realize and understand the need for it. In turn, Range Resources, I am respectfully asking you now to have the same utmost respect for all citizens wherever they reside to operate this vital industry in industrial-zoned areas where it belongs and not in people's backyards. In conclusion, with proper ordinances and zoning in place, we can all coexist and end this conflict and quarreling for all. Thank you for your attention.
I can assure you, for the next meeting, we are going to try to have this resolved. Wait, who's next?
Good evening. My name is Dr. Keith Wharton. I've been practicing for four... You can't hear. My name is Dr. Keith Wharton. I have been practicing for 42 years in western Pennsylvania. I've been board certified in obstetrics and gynecology, and I also been board certified in anti-aging and regenerative medicine. And... And regenerative medicine. I would like to speak about the health-related issues pertinent to the people of Cecil Township. Did you know the cancer rates in southwestern Pennsylvania are up to 50% higher than the rest of the United States? In the past, people living in rural areas have... Excuse me. Have been less impacted from the industrial carcinogens and hydrocarbons. Sadly, this is no longer the case because the industries have now moved to the rural areas. The backflow water from fracking contains hydrocarbon compounds and radioactive elements. Think about this. Everyone has a radon test performed before moving into a home. That's because the Marcella shale contains uranium, which degrades and produces three different isotopes that are radioactive: two of radium and one of radon. Radon being the second-most common cause of lung cancer in the United States. Hydrocarbons are also a real issue. Most people do not realize the struggles that humans have dealing with hydrocarbons such as benzene, toluene, xylene, and others. These carcinogens are also found in the backflow water. Unfortunately, living organisms concentrate hydrocarbons. We are all well aware that tuna and swordfish levels are very high in methylmercury. That's because hydrocarbons are fat soluble and quickly absorbed into the fat of the body. The hydrocarbons can be redistributed through the body, moving from one fatty area to another, such as going from the liver to the brain. Or, in the circumstances of a pregnant woman, hydrocarbons can be transported through the placenta and be deposited in the baby. This may lead to the development of cancer and birth defects. You see, once inside the human body, these hydrocarbons may remain forever. Our bodies are composed of cells. The cell membranes contain a high percentage of fats. When the cell membranes accumulate hydrocarbons, it does not function properly. And if the cells in the organ are not functioning properly, then the organ does not function properly either. So, in the case of lungs, breathing becomes difficulty. In the case of the heart, it does not pump adequately. All residents, young or old, should not have to suffer from exposure to radioactive isotopes and industrial hydrocarbons. I would respectfully ask the board to implement at least a 2,500-foot setback from all homes, schools, and businesses in Cecil Township. Thank you.
Sir, sir, I would ask you... I would ask you for that same report to help all municipalities across Pennsylvania. Make... Give your same report to our state legislators, and they might be able to help us.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, sir?
I said, in order to help municipalities across the whole state, I think your report would be... Might be well-received in Harrisburg for our legislators to help us with the laws we have to follow.
Thank you, I'm honored. I will send it. Thank you, and I'll give a copy to the reporter as well. Thank you. Thank you all.
I'm Jonathan Williams. I live at 173 Liberty Boulevard, and while I fully endorse the establishment of a 2,500-foot setback, the points that I have to make really have to do, no matter what the setbacks are set, whether it's 1,000, 1,500, 2,000, or what. What are these points? They're issues of compliance, accountability, and safety. They deal with the safety and health, not only for those closest to any drilling and operations, but for the entire community of Cecil Township. What are some of these? Noise, and we heard earlier from the engineer, and we need to establish ambient levels before any construction. Then, during construction and operation, we need to require no more than five decibels above that ambient level for a period of 10 minutes in any one-hour period. Applicants should be required to set up noise monitoring and report on a regular basis to the township or after complaints are received by the township. Set similar time limits on operating machinery and require full enclosure of machinery after a specified number of violations. Truck traffic will create additional noise and must be limited. Importantly, we must limit the operations to 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Monday through Friday, federal and state holidays, excepted. Let me deal with water impoundments. Empoundments and tanks should be no closer than 500 feet to the operator's external property line, and specifically must be permitted by the State Department of Environmental Protection. Eight-foot-high fences must surround impoundments, and the hazardous waste signs must be on the fences, and there should be netting to protect birds. Lighting not to be directed outside the property of the drillers. Emergency and safety. The emergency response plan must be established, provided to the township and to the first responders, such as fire, emergency medical providers, and health. Training must be provided and repeated because in these volunteer associations that are our fire companies, people come in, come out. We need to have continual training. Again, I really compliment you for... Again, I, I really compliment you for dealing with these issues and listening to us. I know that sometimes these things are, are referred to as rules and regulations, but I hope you will agree with me, these are protections that we're talking about. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll break at 7:30. We'll break at 7:30.
I have another, another difficult French name to spell. My name is Ted Leveque. I'm at 360 Victory Lane, Cannonsburg. I am a member of the Traditions of America Steering Committee. I'd like to thank the Cecil Township Board of Supervisors for your thoughtful consideration to changes in the oil and gas ordinances. After many years of operating under the original ordinances, it is wise at this time to evaluate and address the experiences and concerns of citizens within the township. Years ago, this board approved the plan for Traditions of America to develop a planned community for 55 and older residents. To date, 211 homes are occupied and additional 141 homes are to be built. The majority of TOA residents move from surrounding townships. Many move from out of the state. This has created a stronger tax base for the township. We invested here at TOA to live out our retirement years without noise, traffic, and possible health concerns that many of our residents have expressed tonight associated with the oil and gas industry. As you will hear tonight, there are also concerns associated with the unlikely, yet real possibility of emergency events that can play out in the process of drilling wells and gas production. We ask that strong regulations of operations, along with compliance assurances, be in place to protect our citizens. In studying this issue, we discovered many states and communities with healthy gas and oil operations have stronger operating requirements than Cecil Township does now. As part of our due diligence in studying the ordinances, we reached out to Range Resources and accepted their offer to meet and visit an active drilling site and well. Range indicated with 90% assurance that they have no interest in drilling near the TOA community. Reality, however, is if another gas and oil company had tamed the rights for the nearby, sites nearby TOA, they could decide to drill within 500 feet of homes with the current ordinance. It is logical to some of us that our proximity to Peters Township makes our location desirable to reach gas deposits under a township that has stronger restrictions than we do. Many of our people in the community are not anti-fracking, but the one takeaway for me and the others in our tour was for our visit to the drilling and well sites, along with research we have studied, that this is an industry that should not be operating near residential communities. Members of our community have asked that the setbacks be at 20, 2,500 feet. Since that's not possible, I ask that the setbacks be the furthest distance possible from protected structures. Thank you for your time, thank you for what you're considering at this point.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Gary Lippner, 411 Independence Way, Traditions of America. I'd first like to thank the Board of Supervisors for all your time, energy, and effort. I hope everything you hear here tonight will help you make an educated decision to protect all the citizens in Cecil Township. It's a great community, it's great people, we love it here. During my time in the military, which was four years between 1971 and 1975, I was directly involved with firefighting and disaster preparation onboard a ship. Planning for a disaster is not easy. It's challenging because you never know what to expect. After I got out of the military, honorably discharged, I was a professional firefighter, where we trained for all kinds of disasters, all the time, visiting businesses and sites to know how to deal with certain situations. You can't plan for everything, and sometimes things go really wrong quickly. I've experienced, and I have experienced, that unexpected can happen and can result in a disastrous situation. For example, the East Palestine derailment. Those people's lives and community has changed forever. It'll never be the same there. A disaster that no one really expected or planned for, and look what happened. What I witnessed at the drill site has the potential to be a disaster. Therefore, I ask, what is the disaster plan? Is there an evacuation plan for nearby, for nearby residents? Do they lock down? Do they evacuate or kiss their butts goodbye? We really don't know if, if not just Range, but any fracking company has a designated plan to protect the residents and their workers. What chemicals might be released if a disaster occurs? How long will the response time be? We were a paid fire department, our response time was quick. I have nothing against volunteer firefighters or the hard work that they do, but the response time can be delayed by the time they get to the station, out on a rig, and out to a scene of an incident. What plan is there? Unfortunately, bad things do happen, even with the best of planning. A disaster happening near homes and schools can potentially turn into a life, loss-of-life situation. Are the fracking companies ready for this type of situation? We cannot assume that they have a disaster plan. Protecting all the residents of Cecil Township should be your first concern. I know you have a hard job and a tough decision to make, but I really, really hope that the information that you hear tonight will help you make a decision that will protect everyone in Cecil Township. This is our new home, and we love it here, and we are not against fracking, but we want everyone to be safe and healthy. Thank you very much, it's greatly appreciated, and good evening to everyone.
My name is James Feeney, 602 Presidents Drive, Cannonsburg. I also live in Traditions of America. And first of all, I wish to thank the board for your past work to really look at the ordinances and make sure that the degree of safety is increased in it. So I appreciate the, this comes through, yeah, I appreciate the activities you've done so far to strengthen those regulations. However, I have an additional concern which builds upon what Gary just said regarding Township First Responders. First, a word regarding my background. I have over 40 years' experience in the chemical production industry worldwide. I understand the need to be very aware of the inherent risks in chemical processes, of which a fracking site is a chemical process. The fracking process does include return flow, which from deep underground, it may include additional hazardous, potentially hazardous material. Based on the 2020 PA Grand Jury Report, some testing that was done within residences near fracking sites did identify the presence of several chemicals which do exist in the EPA Extremely Hazardous Substance List. These include benzene, toluene, and xylene, which you heard from my earlier colleagues create serious medical concerns. Accidents can and do happen. Anything designed by humans can fail. I do not claim that the people who operate and maintain and design these facilities are somehow inferior. They may be, and I hope they are, the best in the business, but I have helped investigate deadly accidents which occurred near chemical manufacturing sites, and the companies involved at that time were considered the best in the business. It can happen. For the safety and well-being of Township First Responders, not to mention residents that are currently living near fracking sites, independent and out, and ongoing monitoring and testing of water, fluids, and air emissions must be implemented to understand exactly what toxins are in fact present. And further, until such testing can verify that the, whatever setback we're looking at, 1,000, 1,500 feet, 1,800 feet, that setback is what the ordinances will contain, until that can be verified that it is completely safe for our residents and the first responders to be able to monitor those situations, it seems very reasonable and prudent to increase the setback farther, as in the distances noted in the current PA House Bill 170 and Senate Bill 581, that being a 2,500-foot setback. Taking these steps would seem to particularly support the goal number three in the 2023 Cecil Township Comprehensive Plan, the last words ending with "ensure the health and safety of the community." Please follow your stated plan.
Hello, my name's Terry Scott, 145 Black Oak Lane, McConnell Trails. Thank you for having me back. Last time I was here, my topic was common sense. Tonight, let's talk a little about, a little bit about transparency. In order to pass these sort of things, it has to be fair and honest, and if you are receiving a financial interest from one of these companies, I think it's obvious that you need to recuse yourself. It's an obvious conflict of interest receiving funds from a company that you're voting on, so, I mean, I don't know how much more obvious it could be. It's a conflict of interest. We've already had someone admit that they are receiving financial interest, so I hope you do the right thing and recuse yourself. In addition, in addition, I'd like to get into the law, the specific law that was brought up at the beginning saying that we have to allow more drilling or areas to drill. I would like the citation for that law saying that we cannot have a 2,500-foot setback and an explanation as to why South Fayette and Peters Township can have no wells allowed to be drilled. So can that be provided, or?
The question you just asked about South Fayette or maybe Peters, there might be, not be wells right now, but there will be eventually.
No, that's not-
Yeah, yes, yeah. The, the drilling industry says they have leases in all, all those municipalities. Whether they choose to drill there yet or not, that's another story, and we have no control over that.
Okay, can I get that, the law that cites that we can't have a 2,500-foot setback?
The law says that we can't zone them out of existence. So, when we look at the map of 2,500 square feet, we've zoned them out. We, that's against the law, we cannot do it.
But we already-
As much as we'd like to.
But if we already have some, we're not zoning them out, they're already here.
But they're only in one half of the township. You saw, you saw the map we had up here.
Yeah. Is there a law saying that we have to have wells all, oops, all over the township?
They have to be able to drill all over the township. I mean, as I said, we can't ban them. As much as we'd like to do, 3,000 feet, we can't break the law. Nobody up here is going to vote to break the law.
Okay, okay, to be, to be clear, I, I just want to know what that law, a citation, or where we can find that law?
I would actually like to hear that from our solicitor, because I think that's-
Yes.
Yeah, so I think what the chairman was saying, what the chairman was saying is that you can't exclude them from zoning, you can't be prohibitive and prohibit them out of Cecil Township, and the board is trying to find the right fit where there is some ability while still protecting the residents as much as they can. So there's no magic number. I think that this last map we showed you, I think the number was about 1% of the municipality became available. If that upstands court scrutiny, I, I think it will.
Okay. My question, my question then is, like, when will there ever be, like, if you can always have to allow them a spot to drill, when will it ever end? If you, if you got one drilling, and then you have to say, oh, we have to allow room for another one, and another one, and another one? I mean, obviously, it has to be, it has to be, it has to end somewhere, you can only have so many, so I don't understand. We already have some, why do we have to have room to have more?
And the existing ones were taken into account with this last map?
Right.
That was one of the factors, the fact that they do have so many existing well pads covering acreage in the township.
Right.
That was a factor that was taken into account. This board will need to decide how much more aggressive they think, you know, they want to be and can be, and of course, they are also weighing whether it's going to, you know, pass a substantive validity challenge, so they're thinking about that as well, but they're, they're playing around and, well, I'll say tweaking, you know, these factors and, and processes to figure out what, where that right number is. We've spent, so we've spent a significant amount of time looking at ordinances that have stood up in court, and so the purpose, what we're trying to accomplish right now is create an ordinance that is most protective of our residents with the most restrictions that we can, we can possibly include that will stand up in court. We don't want to go into court with this super restrictive ordinance and this super restrictive map and have it thrown out, because we'll have to start back at square one. So what Tom is trying to say, what the chairman's trying to say is, our goal is to look at our township and say, we can't restrict them out, we can't. We can't restrict them out, but where can we allow them that allows the most distance? And then if they challenge our ordinance and take us to court, it will hold up in court. And that's why our solicitor mentioned at the beginning that we looked at, at Murrayville, because that, that stood up to a challenge, to a court challenge. So South Fayette and Peters have very restrictive ordinances, and while I'm sure they believe that they will hold them in court, they haven't actually been challenged. So our goal is to make sure that whatever we write will hold up in court.
One final thing, just so we understand, again, it's stated that we have to, we have to have room for them to be able to drill, but there has to be an endpoint. Like, if there's three spaces left for them to drill, and they drill in those three spaces, and then what happens?
That's it.
Do we have, do we have to open up three more spaces?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, so essentially what we're doing now is we took a look at the entire township, and we said, Supervisor Casiel is correct, we can't zone any industry out, we can't say they can't come. But what we can do is take a look at our map and say, okay, this is where it fits in our township. We haven't done that in the past, this is where it fits. If it works for them, fine, and if it doesn't, then, then that's how it is too. We don't, we don't make special exceptions for other industries, and we're not going to do it for them, but we're saying this is where it works for us.
Okay, thank you very much.
Hey, hold it, wait a second.
Hold on.
I know our, our recorder needs a break too. We, we need, anybody wants to use the restroom, let's take a 10 or 15-minute break.
Before you go, there's a Dodge Durango in the parking lot, license plate MJH6856 that's beeping, so if it's yours, you're, you sat on your key fob or something. Our court reporter needs five minutes.
He says, keep going.
I'll do it.
No, 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 I'm going to get it. We got to get back to our meeting. Would you please take your seats? We're going to get started without you. Please take your seats.
Where's Bill and Frank?
Anyone want to smoke? Please try to find your seats. All right, we're going to have a speaker now, so please give them your attention. They'll stop when they hear you.
Test, test.
Testing, testing, testing.
All right, Justin Roman. I live in the Overlook Plan, 2025 Dantry Drive. So, first of all, thank you for realizing that the ordinance today do not meet the needs of the growing community. That is definitely evident. You can't hear me? All right, test, test. Okay. So thank you again for having this and reviewing the ordinance. This is very crucial to the development of the community. I think everyone realizes that. The testimony that came before me today in the expert review, that opened up so much more than what this is. This is an ordinance, or test, ordinance hearing, but this is so much more than an ordinance. You know, this is everyone's life, everyone's health, financials, you know, everything that goes into this is so much more than just an ordinance. So these are people, I think everyone realizes that, but I think we get lost in that. So just, you know, these are people we're dealing with, that these ordinances really impact day to day. I did not want to say that, but just I felt like I needed to from just looking at everyone that talked before me. So what I did want to talk about is, first, property values. I am the HOA Vice President for the community that I live in, in Overlook. One of our responsibilities when we're elected is to protect the property value. Having any kind of well, any kind of industrial area that is in earshot or visual to where we live is no way good for property value. I think everyone here, if you're for or against oil and gas, can agree with that. So whatever new map is drawn, I hope that's taken into consideration. There's also an opportunity cost that every time that you make a decision to say, hey, something could be built here or a different zone, there's an opportunity cost to that that we can't grow the community. Because that zone isn't that we're going to build more houses, which also increases the tax base, and we're not going to grow the coffers, really. So there's a bunch of, you know, opportunity costs lost in whatever decisions made here. The second thing I really wanted to bring up was the setbacks to schools. I have two kids in school here. One thing that I noticed is there is an abundance of caution in the decisions that the school makes for closing schools. You know, we had closures because of floods in Cecil. I applaud that, I think that's great. We had a closure more recently because there was a solar eclipse, you know, and the timing of it, abundance of caution. You know, I'd never thought I'd see that, but, you know, abundance of caution. With anything with oil and gas and any kind of these ordinance, there needs to be an abundance of caution. You know, we've already heard testimony that no matter what we say and do, the jaws and the teeth of it aren't fully there. So how do we say, hey, the sound ordinance is being broken? The teeth of it needs to be there to be able to, you know, really have that caution too. So what I want to see is whatever the schools have the setback to, is that any R2 plan is similar to that setback. There are more kids in our neighborhood than would fill up one school. So Hills Hendersonville, pretty much the whole school is our neighborhood. So the kids spend more time at home, summers, during the day. There's more people working from home now since 2020, you know, that just keeps increasing. So the abundance of caution needs to be there for whatever setback to match whatever school setback there is. So the one last point I'd want to make is this decision, and the reason it's polarizing, is because it's money versus health. And why are we making that call? This should be, health should trump anything else.
All right, we understand your point.
It looks like we're going to have another meeting. I'll talk about everything else next time. So, looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Leah Lippner. I live at 411 Independence Way, Traditions of America. First, I'd like to thank the Board of Supervisors for taking on this task. It's not easy to sit through these hearings, and it's a hard thing to do, and you need to be commended for that to get the community in board. Next, I'd like to present for the record a petition as of tonight, signed by 190 residents in Traditions of America, with action items, 2,000 to 2,500-feet setbacks from all residences, and a rigorous enforcement of these setbacks. Which part? The action items. 2,000 to 2,500-feet setbacks for all residents. And then the next one was rigorous enforcement of the setbacks. Next? Next. I'd like to help you out a little bit. The last time I was here and spoke before you, I heard it repeated over and over that you can not zone fracking out of a community. That was true from 1970 until 2013. The PA Supreme Court said state cannot force fracking on local communities. I have a copy of that for you also. Last Wednesday, six TOA residents went to TOA, met with some of their engineers, I mean, not TOA, Range, and met with some of their engineers. We visited the Augustine and Malpleasant sites. Let me tell you, I got off the bus, the smell, the taste of diesel fuel in my mouth is unacceptable, and that no one should be forced to live 500 feet from that. What that did was strengthen my resolve to ask for 2,000 to 2,500-feet setbacks. Health and safety of all residents in Cecil Township should be the highest priority. I'm not opposed to fracking if it's done in a reasonable manner, strict health and safety laws, and ensure all older oil and gas companies follow those rules. A little bit about myself before I say thank you. I'm a retired Pittsburgh public school teacher, and I am retired Vice President of the Pittsburgh Federation of Teachers. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Michael Studd. Address is 5015 Furwood Drive, from Oak Brook Estates. Just to let the board know, I moved here with my family several years ago, now over a decade ago, because I fell in love with this area. We looked at many different communities, and we just absolutely fell in love with Cecil and everything that it offered, everything that it was offering, what it was doing for professionals, what it was doing for young families to come into the community. And we couldn't have been happier. Now that we are looking at this aspect of our health and our safety for our family, for our children, for our residents, I'm just hoping that each one of you will follow the same principle when looking at this current topic. The one thing, I also wanted to let everybody know, I am actually an attorney, so I respect what you've done with the map, and I understand the hardships that you have undergone in maybe getting what we are all asking for. I did do some independent research on this topic this week. I think that the current proposed map, well, maybe it could or could not be tightened up more, is a very good start or a solution to the current issues with also surviving a legal challenge that I'm sure would probably come from Range Resources. I would love it to be farther apart, and I'm sure everybody, or most everybody in this room would as well, but I do understand that portion. The one thing I would like to say, though, as being an attorney and working with municipalities and judges, I think the Commissioner made a very good point earlier when he said you guys are the judges of this particular issue. I think you are. You're going to decide at the end of the day about the facts that you heard, and the facts that you heard at this meeting are very, very clear, right? I mean, there is proof presented that this will lead to increase in asthmatic attacks, childhood cancer rate will increase, the noise level are not appropriate at these sites. These are all facts that were presented in front of you with really no countering facts. It's probably one of the easier cases that you would ever have if you were an actual judge. The only way that I could actually think that you would not vote unanimously to change the current ordinances is if you did have a conflict of interest or another reason financially to not support this change. Just because you have a conflict of interest, that is not necessarily a bad thing. I think we had a Commissioner here tonight, Commissioner Barney, that said she had a conflict of interest. I commend her for that. I don't think it's bad that you have one, we all may have one, but it's bad if you vote on this issue, if you have one. So what I will tell you is I have been working not only within my own HOA, but with a collection of HOAs of almost every community in this township that are the larger communities. We will be looking, we feel that there are two Commissioners currently that have conflicts of interest, I think you know who you are. We will be watching how you vote. If it's a, hey, I'm conflicted, I'm not going to vote, I would not hold that against you. If you vote, though, for your pocketbook versus the health and safety of the residents, I will promise you that our collective communities will do anything that we can in our power to reflect how you voted the next time you are up for reelection. Lastly, that is, again, a group of thousands upon thousands of homes in this community, because it's not just our community, it is a collective force that has been put together most recently. So we would ask you to vote, as I just mentioned. Thank you for your time.
I need to clarify something you said. Supervisor Barney didn't say she had a conflict, she said she has leases. And conflicts fall under the, wait a minute, listen, conflicts fall under the ethics law. And if you have a true conflict, it's a moral or an ethical issue, but there's no law about it. This board, with our solicitor, we're very cognizant of issues that come up among board members, and we're always on that to, it actually protects our board members if we make sure they know it's a conflict where they should recuse themselves.
Understand, there's a...
So we're on it.
Yeah, understand there's a legal definition contract and then a moral one. The reason I reflected, Commissioner Barney, is when a gentleman earlier asked if there was a conflict, I believe she said yes, on the record.
I said...
Yeah, unless I'm wrong.
Okay, how long have you been living in a township, sir? Can I ask you that question? Aw, listen. How long have you been living in a...
You can, and I would love to have that conversation. I've been living in it for over a decade. Now, what I will tell you is, if you're, I'll let you say your piece on that, go ahead.
So you've been here a decade?
A little bit over, yes.
Okay. So I've been taking my farm, and I've had leases. Am I supposed to end up not reaping the benefits from my land that's been in generation after generation in Cecil Township? Have you ever here my whole life?
No, no, no.
Enough of that!
No, you are, so my answer to your question, since I was asked a question.
Yeah, let him weigh it.
Well, she asked me a question, I just wrote, very short answer, I've been pretty respectful. Sure. Sure, my answer to that was, the question was if you should be able to reap what you are owed from generations, and you absolutely should reap what you are owed. What you should not do is vote on a matter, though-
Thank you.
-if you are reaping those benefits. So that's where I would ask you to recuse yourself.
All right, Mike, thank you. Finally, he's in for a case.
Good evening, everyone. Laurel Zimba, Director of Public Affairs for Range Resources, and also a 20-year resident of Cecil Township.
Please give us some attention, please.
Okay. Laurel Zimba, Z-I-E-M-B-A. Thank you so much for allowing us to provide public comment on the proposed ordinance amendments to the oil and gas ordinance. I want to start by thanking you also for taking a tour of our operations. In fact, over the course of the last 10 days, we've hosted local government and community members on four separate trips to meet with our employees and to tour a combination of drilling and producing well pads. I'm grateful for the opportunity to explain the activity on pad and to indicate the enhanced noise mitigation that we've deployed in an attempt to lessen the discomfort that nearby residents have experienced. We will continue to make our employees and our operations available to the community as we continue to develop this resource. Speaking of community outreach, I felt it deserved to be mentioned, at Range Resources, we manage a vibrant community outreach program, which includes our corporate charitable giving and employee volunteer programs. Over a 15-year span-
All right. All right.
Stop, stop.
Everybody needs to calm down. Everybody has their chance to speak.
May I have that 10 seconds back, please?
Yes, you may.
Thank you.
You can have 10 minutes because you're a professional.
Okay.
Everybody else did.
Which includes our corporate charitable giving and employee volunteer programs. Over a 15-year span- Over a 15-year span, Range has donated over $12 million directly to nonprofit organizations, and our employees have volunteered over 17,000 hours to support causes in our local communities. Giving back is woven through our community culture, our company culture, and our employees at every level of company management participate in volunteerism. In 2023, we gave to 419 unique nonprofit organizations. Included in that number are organizations that directly support Cecil Township and Cannon-Mack School District. Over the past five years, Range has donated over 184,000 to Cecil Township, including 55,000 to Cecil Township Police and Fire Departments, 55,000 to educational initiatives at Cannon-Mack School District, 32,000 to youth extracurricular activities, and 42,000 to Cecil Township and the Parks and Rec Department, including funding for handicap swings at Lawrence Park. Now, it's important to talk about the economic benefits of natural gas as well. To that end, I want to highlight Governor Shapiro's recently remarks on CBS's Face the Nation program regarding President Biden's pause on liquefied natural gas exports. Governor Shapiro said, "If the pause goes on for a long time, it has the potential to cost us jobs." Our governor acknowledges the important benefits that shale development represents to Pennsylvania and the economic benefits that reach into the billions of dollars. However, an export pause isn't the only action that can cost jobs. Decisions made on a local level can have dire implications on natural gas development and send the wrong message from a township that many energy companies in South Point call home. I urge the board to think of the implications that decisions made in this township will have on a larger level. I'm very encouraged by the open line of communication that Range has established with the township, and I encourage the board to continue working with the community and with Range on an acceptable path forward with regard to updating the oil and gas ordinance. I did want to make a comment on Padre, if you wouldn't mind. There's a gentleman here who asked about our PPC plan. We do have a copy of those PPC plans at each location. It's included within the ordinance packet, and then we also have offered tours to first responders of our well pads, in addition to inviting them to drills at our building. Earlier today, Range provided comments to the board on the April draft amendments to the township's oil and gas ordinance. I have a copy of those with me, and I would ask that they be included in the record for tonight's hearing. That's all. Thank you very much.
Ready?
Hello, my name's Mike Monaco. I'm on 1440 Rising Road, McDonnell, PA. I'm kind of confused about this whole operation. My understanding was, or I don't have an understanding of, when is the question and answering period of any taxpayer questioning some of your experts, some of the opinions, which I considered testimony, that you guys disclosed to us during this whole meeting? We haven't had a chance to dispute anything. When does that happen?
That happens from here on in.
When?
There'll be a 30-day period before we schedule the next public hearing, so in that time, you can submit questions, and hopefully we'll have answers before, if you ask us right on the spot, we might, we'd have to say, we probably don't know.
Okay.
So you have 30 days to, before the next hearing.
That really doesn't work, Tom, because last time, I have four questions here, I expected an answer to, when Dan was here quite a while, he ain't here. One of them was, based on the overlays that he did at 500 and 1,000, my question was, how much ground or acreage was excluded by going to 1,000 feet in relation to what we have now? Do you have that answer?
Yes, we have. Dan answered, I think Darlene promoted that question, but the point is, we're past that now. If you see the new one, it's not, we're not even looking at that one anymore.
Well, that's another issue. Didn't this go in front of the planning board?
Yes, and they'll be, we'll have to send the next one to the, the next changes to them also.
Historically, you would have a question and answer work group that would address all this before you kind of designed these ordinances.
No, it's not a question and answer. The planning commission, we're, you'd make comments or ask questions.
Not the planning commission. Historically, when you even drafted an ordinance, you'd have a work group, and you, the taxpayer would ask questions, you'd have your experts, things would pass through.
What do you mean, historically? Historically, we have hearings to get, make, have public input. Sure, it is. I've been here longer than you, Mike.
How do I, how do I address any of these experts?
You ask the questions, and we will get the questions to them. They might not be able to answer it here right now, but the point is, we don't have time for that.
So I got three minutes to ask your guy that was 10 minutes up here.
No, put it in writing and give it to us in advance. Meanwhile, you can talk your time, but you don't have to ask your questions now because most likely we can't answer them. You know that. Give it to us, we'll have an answer for the next meeting.
But you haven't answered any of my questions. That's my problem.
We have answers to those for you asked, but I'm saying-
Well, I'm gonna continue to ask questions then.
All right.
I'm sorry.
Well, take your time.
Hold on, Tom. I was told not to give any answers to these, I mean, to display these, give these answers to the residents.
It's public information, give it to them.
Okay.
We paid for it.
Okay, but right on the bottom, it says it's confidential information. I'm not allowed to relate this to a resident.
Until the board gets it, then we release it to the, the board releases it, not you, all right? And you'll be safe. So you'll get them, Mike, and ask away.
Based on the current well permits, if you went to 1,000 feet, and I used 1,000 feet, I think all those wells would have been excluded, which would violate the Title 58 and Act 13 that you're trying to comply with. That's what I want an answer, what those have been excluded.
It doesn't matter now, Mike, we're not using that 1,000-foot map, so if we were, we'd have to answer it.
That's nice, Tom, but I'm here today to ask you questions, and they're irrelevant because you never answered them.
Because you're asking on a map that's no longer under consideration. Just move on to something. Here's the map now, ask us questions about this one. We're past that map.
Okay. Based on the proposal you have, that's 99% of the popu, of the land that's going to be excluded. That's considered a cardinal change in the legal world. That requires specific conditions to be met, and one of them is to publish it in a proper fashion so that taxpayers can understand exactly what you're doing and why.
It will be. This is the first presentation. We haven't publicly put it out yet, but the residents are here, so we're giving them basically a preview.
So how did we influence that? How did any of my questions influence that? It didn't.
Say that again?
How did any of my questions influence your design? But that design was used to draft an ordinance that basically, no offense, and I'm gonna challenge your sound ordinance or sound study, because you personally told me that was used to support a complaint. I read that thing. There was one sentence that basically said that Rains performed. The rest of the document was a hit piece on what the ordinance should be, what it can be, and how they would support it. It was never used-
Mike, listen, we're upgrading our ordinance, and we brought a sound expert in this time. We didn't have one last time.
When was he hired?
I don't know what day exactly.
Mike, yeah, we have more than three minutes. Let the other people talk, if you want to come back at the end.
I'd like to claim somebody else's three minutes.
No, you can't. All right, Mike.
Three minutes ain't up yet. Three minutes ain't up yet because I stop it when they talk.
Oh, it ain't up yet.
She stops, she stops whenever we talk.
Well, I'd like to claim somebody else's three minutes. Because I'm really not done, I haven't got started.
All right, go ahead, Mike, finish up.
Well, that's my point. You now are drafting ordinances, or how many, what version is this?
You'll have it tomorrow, maybe the third or fourth.
At least.
It's a, right, it's a work in progress.
But my understanding, you told me that that ordinance was geared to taxpayer import, import, input, and also experts. Has there any conversation been done with Range? And why aren't they here challenging these experts? Why, were they invited?
No, no.
No, they ain't. I'm talking about technical people.
Wait, timeout.
They talk to us all the time.
There are a lot of people left to speak, and we're good till 9:00. We will answer your, if you want questions, we will answer them. I can email you, I have the answer to her questions. If she doesn't email into you, I can email to you. No, he doesn't have more time.
All right.
You people, she's talking.
She has a timer. Go ahead, Darlene.
I've been stopping whenever you've been talking. Stop talking and let him finish up.
Go ahead, Darlene.
So we have a lot of people.
Go ahead, Mike.
Well, you answered it. One of them, the planning commission, have they even addressed any of these?
Yes, every plan.
Yes, they did.
Where are the results?
We have them, but the point is, it's a new one, we're sending it to them tomorrow. Actually, how soon will they get them?
Depends on when this morning is ready to advertise it.
Okay.
Depending on what you hear tonight, you may-
Right, we're getting comments, go ahead, tell them that, Gretchen.
So the ordinance has not been formally advertised because we're getting board input. They're listening to people tonight, they're listening to the residents and taxpayers and the experts. The board then will decide what it wants to push out and advertise, which it will go through all the procedural processes it has to go through, but it's just not there yet. I don't know when it's going to be. I don't think, I think tomorrow is too early, but it will be soon.
There's no possible way that I can answer, answer, ask questions that are relative to what you're doing.
Of course not, that's why you have to come next month. You'll see it in a few days.
Right, this will be formally advertised for a hearing in June.
So after it's prepared, after there's collusion between everybody that's involved, creates a draft, and then we have to address the draft that's already been corrupted. That's my problem.
It's not corrupted, it's a work in progress.
It is corrupted because you have expert witnesses that can't be challenged.
We're not getting anywhere with this, Mike. You're gonna see a draft, the new draft, as soon as we have it, and you can comment on all you want. You have 30 days at least. Come on, who's next?
Hello, my name is Julie DiBano. I live on Grange Road.
Please make sure you speak up.
Can you hear? Okay. I think most of us understand that this is an evolving process, and we appreciate the fact that you were trying to think creatively and-
You got her name?
And went ahead and, you know, came up with the new map, the new approach. We thank you for that, and we're glad that you're looking at this. I think, and that's because it's very clear from listening to all of the speakers, the residents in the room, this meeting and last, that the vast majority of the residents here and representing really want meaningful, I guess setbacks really aren't appropriate anymore, but want meaningful change to the ordinance to protect our families and our properties and our health and wellbeing. Let's see, I had to change my notes because the map kind of changed, but the current setbacks we know are totally unacceptable. I live about a mile, as the crow flies, I guess, from a well, and we often hear it, it's very loud. We always say how badly we feel for the people that live by that. People say it's always the same few complaining, but that's because they're the most impacted, and we're grateful that they brought our attention to it. If they didn't, no one would know or may not know that this is going on and how important it is for us to speak up. The setbacks, we've talked about before that they should be the closest, the closest resident should be the leaseholder. People often say, oh, people have a not in my backyard mentality. I don't think that's the case. I think we have a not in anyone's backyard mentality. It shouldn't be there. Only the leaseholders have a not in my backyard. They want to put it in their neighbor's backyard, but not theirs. And last but not least, I'm a CPA, I've been a controller for private, public, nonprofit, for-profit companies. I've sat on many boards, many financial oversight committees, and every legitimate board, whether it's corporate, governance, municipal, they make sure that members are recused from voting when they have a conflict of interest. There is such a thing as a financial conflict of interest, or even a, there is such a thing as a financial conflict of interest, or even a perceived conflict of interest. If you're a legitimate board, you should be recusing any board member or any member with an immediate family member getting checks from the industry. They're not independent. It's clearly a conflict, and it compromises their ability to vote in the interest of the residents, as you've sworn to do, instead of your own self-interest. Someone said, let's hope you do the right things and recuse yourself. Let's not hope, let's require it. It's the right thing to do.
You know, there's an easy answer to that. We can ask the Ethics Commission to make a ruling. That's what they do. So if an issue comes up, if a board member doesn't know if they're conflicted or if there's an accusation, they're the ones that make the determination. So you have a problem, if we write to them and ask them of a-
We got a solicitor right here, why can't she do it for us?
She doesn't make that decision. She absolutely does not make that decision.
The fact that you have a check in your purse right now with the name Range on it is a conflict. It's clearly a conflict.
There's a mechanism for that, so let us work that, okay?
Well, also, at the last board meeting, we heard several board members give their thoughts. One said that she feels bad for the residents that are being impacted but can't do anything about it, hope for the best. Well, you people are the ones that can't. You have the power to do something and help the residents. You can vote to vote the drilling out of the residential areas. Another board member said he was a problem solver. Good, I'm glad, because look around, this is a problem, and the way to solve it is to take the industry out of the residential areas. Please listen to the majority of these speakers at these meetings and do something, just like you asked Range to do. Don't just listen, do something. Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Hi, my name is Christine DiGiulio, D-I-G. My name is Christine DiGiulio, D-I-G-U-I-L-I-O. I live at 438 Dogwood Lane. Obviously, I take care of people for a living. I'm a nurse. My biggest concern about fracking in our community is the risk of cancer. I see people every day struggle with cancer. We are exposed to so many things, and when we have the ability to put those things as far away from us as we can, then we should. You do not want to see people suffer with cancer. Your next generations, you don't want to see suffer from cancer. I'm sure everyone in this room, on this board, has known somebody or been a family member of somebody who has died or struggled with cancer. This is not something that we want here for our children, for our elderly, for anybody in the community. The maximum distance that we can vote for, I understand you're saying that they still have to be here in our community. If that is the case, then we need to find the maximum distance that we can distance ourselves from these things. It's, how can we live as a community if we start dying from cancer? If we start poisoning our water? It just shouldn't be here. This isn't the last place on earth to drill. If it were the last place on earth to drill, and it was our last ability to get natural gas, and this is what would keep us, our species surviving, I could understand it. But this is not, and this is probably not what anybody wants. Nobody wants to be ill, but it has to be farther away, as far as we can get that. I would hope that everyone here would vote to keep our community safe. That is what you do. And regardless of whether you've allowed leasing on your community, or you do those things for yourself as members, you still have to vote for the health of the community. That was your individual choice, but your individual choice does not apply to the rest of us, and you should consider the entire community. I know Range spoke also of how they made donations and things to our community. They can have all that money back. Because all corporations and all companies make donations, they make donations everywhere, and it serves a wonderful tax write-off for them. And I understand that they want to uplift the community, and they want to look good in the community. I think that's fantastic and be supportive, but they should not expect something back, which is our health. That is not- is not acceptable. If buying our health is something that's okay, then I could see why you would vote differently, but you cannot sell our health. This is too important. Our generations won't thrive here if we waste everything that we have here. We just can't live that way. And so I ask that you consider that when you vote, that as far as we can be from residential areas, that we would do that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Dave Templeton. I'm a former reporter with Pittsburgh Post-Gazette, but I'm not speaking on behalf of the Post-Gazette. I'm no longer associated with the newspaper. What I want to say is that there is no community in Western Pennsylvania, arguably, that has had a more tragic impact, and most likely from pollution. We did a study five years ago, and within a mile down the street here, three young men died from Ewing sarcoma who lived within blocks of each other. There were three other Ewing sarcomas in the Cannon-McMillan School District. Five years ago, there were 11 kids with cancer in the Cannon-McMillan School District, including four additional sarcomas. Now, we know one thing about Ewing sarcoma. It's caused by one thing that is least recognized: radium. Fracking, fracking generates radium galore, and it's now being disposed of in large part in our landfills. But they also, you know, but it also comes from venting and other things. We also know, and I thank Dr. Fubizziak and others who've done research, because they're now associating at the dismay of the industry, they're now associating fracking with cancers, leukemias and lymphomas, and I would say arguably, if they look close enough, and look at this area, they're going to find sarcomas and other things that are radium-induced, because they cause, they use particulates, they generate particulates, chemicals, radiation. That's about the full gamut of pollution. So what I want to say is, whenever you generate pollution, science is clear, there's going to be health damage. So I just want to say, already there's been significant health damage in Cecil. And with another well and more wells as close by as Augustine, the result will be health damage. Thank you.
Hi there. My name's Bill Eleamos. I live at 524 Cherry Hill Drive.
Say your name one more time, Bill.
Bill Eleamos, E-L-E-A-M-O-S, a name you've probably never heard of before. There's not many of us left, in this area anyways. I'm up here speaking not on behalf of myself but my daughter and grandchildren, and I just want to state that I'm glad I'm not sitting in any of your seats. You hold such a tremendous responsibility. I don't know how you sleep at night. I'll be honest with you, because I've lost sleep at night, wondering what's going to happen to them. And to answer your question, I was born and raised here in Cecil Township. I'm 67 years old. I love this area. That's why I never moved out of this area.
So have I.
I hope to die in this area, but not from cancer or anything else. We have allowed in this township to be ransacked by many industries. Example, the coal industry. When I first built my home, my second new home in Cecil Township, someone mentioned to me, "You should get mine some silence insurance." I said, "Why?" He said, "You'd be amazed at how much there is." I called, I called DAP, they sent me a map. Underneath my home is, there were so many ones that they had that had these empty caverns left underneath my home. So now every year, I pay for homeowner's insurance for drilling, for the coal industry. Which leads me to my next comment. In the, I don't know if you're aware, in the Timber Run area, there were five homes affected by a profound chemical smell in their home. They called contractors in to check it out. It was not gas, not air conditioning, not electrical. My daughter even called an electrical contractor to check all her breakers and wiring in the house to see if that's... It took two days to air the house out. They had to come sleep at my house to avoid that. You ask yourself, how could a chemical smell get in all them homes? I'll answer it for you. Where they live at is also coal mining. When they fracked one mile away from her house, they probably got into the tunnels of those mines, the chemical odors seeped up through the foundation, because no foundation is airtight. That's why people have radon tests done. Just another problem that can exist from what's happening. Just wanted to bring that up. I don't know if you're aware of that. Also, for the people out here, the state of Washington, Oregon, New York, Maryland, and Vermont, states have banned fracking. You all heard about Peters in South Fayette. Tom, you're saying that's not going to fly. My question to you is, if we contacted any of these states that have banned it, to find out exactly what the parameters are for us, I mean, we've got five sites in here now. By next meeting, what I hope to see is copies of a map, which is why when you put the map up, you had this whole room roaring, because nobody could understand that little map up there. We need to know, with the proposed 1,500 pound, 1,500 foot setback, how many sites does that leave left in the township?
We will have this prepared for everybody, copied whenever...
Okay, well, I thank you, Tom, for that.
And then we can hold it on your lap and seat. I know that's tough. It's the best we had right now.
It'll be on the website, too.
That's what interrupted this meeting, because nobody could understand that. And we have, and we also need to know how many more we need to give them. If you're saying by law, we need to keep on proliferating our community, how many more do we have to give them to meet the law? If it's two, let's give them only two more sites and call it a day.
We are working on that, to tell you the truth.
I mean, is there a law that says, "We've given them five in our township"? Do we have to, how many more do we have to give them to be within compliance?
Again, we might have even a better map than this next time. We're working on it. Thank you, Bill.
All righty. I thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is John Kamen, K-A-M-I-N. I'm an attorney with offices in Pittsburgh. About 11 years ago, I actually was in this room and had a conversation with your then-sitting board members about challenging something called Act 13. You may remember that. That was the state law that allowed drilling everywhere. Along with John Smith and a friend of ours, Jordan Jaeger, from across the state, we took that challenge to the Pennsylvania Supreme Court and won twice. So I believe I'm...
I was there. Remember, John?
I do, Tom. You were there with us, and actually you testified for us.
Yep.
So I do have some experience in oil and gas law and zoning law, and most of my practice is zoning and land use. I'm here tonight for TOA Cecil, which is the Traditions of America at South Point Development, to talk to you a little bit about your ordinance and some changes that we think you can make. That would be very helpful. I did send my comments to the board by email last week. First of all, I do want to start out and say we applaud you looking at the ordinance. We think it's long overdue, and we actually think it's your legal right now to look at the ordinance as part of the Act 13 decisions that we just celebrated our 10th year anniversary on in December. A couple of things that I want you to think about as you look at the ordinance. Number one, well, you have to allow mineral development. That doesn't necessarily mean that you have to allow surface operations everywhere. There is a distinction between what happens on the surface and what happens subsurface. You already have five wells in the township. The areas that you're talking about in the township may not be able to be drilled from the surface, but they certainly can be drilled, and those minerals can be accessed from other parts, other drillings that may happen in other townships. So I would encourage you, when you're looking at these maps, to think about not just what's happening on the surface in Cecil, but what is happening on the surface in other places, to see if those minerals and those oil and gas rights are actually accessible. We'll tell you that, based on my read of it, they are. So the second thing I would say, and I do a lot of work for a lot of companies that have, you know, what we consider to be noxious uses, you don't have to allow the maximally productive use. What you have to allow is the use. So think about that, too, when you're looking at the drilling within the township. With respect to our specific recommendations on this ordinance, we believe that 2,500 feet is appropriate. We think that that makes a ton of sense, and that also does allow for reasonable development within the township. We also believe that you must take into account, in your definition of protected structures and others, subdivisions that have either major subdivisions that have approved lots or master plans that have approved lots in it. It's not fair for people who have gone ahead and created these subdivisions to find out that because the township has approved a lot, all of a sudden, something comes up six months later, and somebody who banked on having something 2,500 feet or 1,500 feet or 1,000 feet away from them now finds it in their backyard.
John, we did address that.
He's a professional. He gets 10 minutes.
Tom, go ahead.
10 minutes.
Tom, I did see that in the last draft, and we applaud that change.
All right.
The other thing that I wanted to note about the way that you're measuring the setbacks is they're measured, at least in the latest draft I saw, from the wellhead. I think we should be looking at these setbacks from the property line.
Yeah, we'll have copies of this. And I did see your report, but I think I would like to, we'll make sure you get a copy of the latest one. We're working on it. As Gretchen said, it's going to go out shortly, as soon as we're done, and we'll see how those comments fit into what we've already done, and you might see some of them in there.
Great. I appreciate that, because one of the concerns we have is that, while the wellhead may be in the middle of a large track line, you can have the frac pond right on the border.
There's no frac ponds.
Well, there are. There are...
Frac ponds is gone by the wayside.
Not, they're still, they're not prohibited under your ordinance.
Well, but there's no fracking ponds in Cecil Township.
But, not now, but they're not prohibited under the ordinance. So you can go right down the road and see plenty of them.
Gretchen has...
Yeah, I think in the most recent draft, the ponds and impoundments are prohibited, consistent with the fact that they're just not being used anymore. So we don't think that's a prohibitive prohibition that we've added, but we have made them now prohibited, and the water storage tanks are allowed.
Great. And then with regard to...
That was the last version, yeah.
Right.
With regard to the performance standards that we're talking about, we did have some recommendations on things that you should add into that. And one of the questions that was raised earlier, I think by Mr. Cassiola, and also the solicitor, is, in the situation when we were talking about the sound studies and those types of things, as to whether or not there's compliance, we think it's appropriate to ask the operator to post financial security so that the township has a mechanism and doesn't have to go out of pocket to demonstrate that compliance. That's something that's typically done on any development. When you have a developer coming in, they post an escrow for inspections. They post an escrow for bonds on your roads. They post all those other items. So there's, there's no reason why you shouldn't ask an operator to post an escrow amount, an escrow amount and an appropriate amount, to make sure that these inspections can be done by the township and that the taxpayers don't have to go out of pocket to do them on their own.
Hey, John, I wanted to give you this. This is my copy, a paper copy, that's going to be out, but if you take this one, because I know you, a lot of your comments tied into this, so will you take that as a paper copy, and you can help us see how we tied into some of your comments.
Well, I appreciate it. And again, I do applaud you guys looking at the ordinance. I think it's long overdue, and appreciate the steps that you've taken and also the updates that you've made. So, thanks.
Thanks, John.
Hi, Adele Guge, 512 980 Road. First, I want to thank all of you for taking the time that you've put into reviewing the ordinance and the setbacks. I think a new ordinance is a good compromise and a way to protect the residents. I am 2,500 feet from a well pad. I've endured years of noise during the pad construction. When they would bring the dump trucks to build the road, they would back them up. You'd hear the dump trucks. They'd dump a whole load of gravel, on and on and on, for two summers. So we made it through that, and the worst that we've had so far is when they drilled four out of 15 approved wells at the Schultz well pad, and it was 24/7 disturbing noise for months. On February 28th, Range called and told me that the noise was louder than they had anticipated that it would be. This is why it's very important that we need to take the recommendations of Mr. Thornton into account. One of his studies, as you know, was on my property, and while they were in the limits, the sound, DBIN, DBC, were very, very high. The new ordinance, I believe, is a step in the right direction, but we need stronger noise, air, and water protection. If we are going to continue to approve well pads, we need to put residents as a priority. I'm asking that you do the right thing and vote in favor of the new ordinance and setbacks to protect us. And I have a question. I am in favor of expanding setbacks, but I'm concerned that Range would request additional wells on the current pad. So how would that be handled?
We can't really just holler and do their...
So I'm thinking that if we are limiting where they can put a well, and somebody said that on a current pad, they can drill up to five miles, I'm concerned that they will try to put more wells on an approved pad.
So if there's any change to what was already previously approved, I would consider that a new application. So what's been approved is, you know, you see the application, you see what happened at the hearings, and then there's an approval. I can't sit here and tell you what each approval is, but each one was approved with a certain amount of wellheads approved.
Correct. Right.
So if you're going to come back and you want to add more, that's a new application.
And that's in the...
And that would be hopefully denied. Well, it would have to follow, well, or it would have to follow the new ordinance. So when they come in for a new application, they wouldn't be grandfathered. They would be under whatever the existing ordinance is at the time. That's all. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kathy Romano, 48 Ridgewood Drive. I live in Ridgewood Heights. First, I have one question to begin with. If we would have all been awake back when they went on Swihart Road, I know there were some people awake and came to the meetings and went against it and everything like that. If we would have not let Range in at that time on Swihart Road, and with the wells and things we have going on there now, at that point, could we have not had fracking? How long ago did Swihart go in, the things on Swihart?
2012.
2012, so like 10?
No, 2010.
2010.
Okay. So if we would have not approved that then, could we have stopped fracking in our area? Because you're saying that now we have to be at a certain setback. We can't go at 2,500 feet because we have to allow them in here. So if we would have back then said, "No fracking," could we have had no fracking?
The law was before the applications came. We couldn't stop it.
Okay, so we had to let them in when they came in on Swihart?
You know that.
Okay.
If they met whatever the ordinance, so there's an ordinance in place at any particular time, and if they applied, whatever ordinance was in place is what applied to their particular application, and it has to be processed pursuant to that ordinance.
Okay. Well, I just want to read, I just want to read a little thing here. I'm not aware, I'm not sure if everyone here is aware of all this. It's just something to put in, and I'm sure you all are aware of it, because you're looking at all this. The oil and gas industry is exempt, okay, from, or excluded, from several sections of the major federal environment laws. Now granted, we don't make the federal laws, but they are exempt from... Now granted, we don't make the federal laws, but they are exempt from the Clean Air Act, the Clean Water Act, the Safe Drinking Act, the National Environmental Policy Act, the Resource Conservation and Recovery Act, the Emergency Planning and Community Right to Know Act, and the Comprehensive Environmental Response, Compensation, and Liability Act. So technically, I think that means that there's a lot of things that a lot of industries have to do that they don't have to do. And are they following these? I mean, I don't think they have to, do they? I just want to make people aware of what they're exempt of in, okay, in industry, because there's a lot of industries that have to follow these laws, and they don't.
But you're saying that's federal?
It's federal. I know it's federal, but I'm just bringing it up to people here so they know that, like a lot of things, they don't have to disclose. They don't have to disclose a lot of things, I don't think.
Kathy, but I think if the state has to follow the federal laws, that's one thing we have to follow the state laws.
Right, I know that, but I just want people to be aware of what they are exempt of. So we let them in and I am definitely 110% in favor as getting those setbacks as far as possible as we can. And that's all I have to say, because these say a lot when you're exempt from things like that.
My name is Sarah Martik. I live at 2003 White Oak Circle, Cannonsburg, 15317. I'm a resident and also the executive director of the Center for Coalfield Justice. So having attended the hearing last month, I just want to...
Can you make sure you talk as loud as you can?
Oh, sorry, yeah, I'll do better. Having attended the hearing last month, I'm compelled to share a little more in reaction to what I'm hearing tonight. I first have to address jobs. It's kind of the elephant in the room. It's a topic that never goes away when environmental issues come up. I doubt that there's a person in this room who doesn't know someone who works in the oil and gas industry. And from a microeconomic perspective, looking at the economics of a family, a job, but any job, is life-changing. But when you zoom out and you look at the counties in Pennsylvania, Ohio, and West Virginia where fracking happens over the Marcellus, you will find that those counties saw the number of full-time jobs drop by 2.1% between 2008 and 2021, even when those states as a whole experienced a 3.8% job growth. Income growth trailed the national average by 16 percentage points. The population in those counties declined by 4.8%, while the U.S. population grew by 9%. All of these statistics are available in reports by researcher Sean O'Leary at the Ohio River Valley Institute, which is a regional think tank, and I encourage you to read those. In your decision-making, I implore this board to go deeper than talking points. You can encourage job growth, you can even allow new wells to be drilled while significantly increasing setbacks and setting stricter sound requirements. Any assertions otherwise are just threats. Exclusionary zoning is, in my experience, industry's favorite legal threat. They say that if you dare to increase setbacks beyond the state minimum, you're zoning them out. The state sets the floor, but you can go higher than that. Same with the federal government. But you're not zoning them out. The law does not mean that they must be allowed to establish new pads. The prohibition on exclusionary zoning is designed to protect the reasonable extraction of minerals, which is established in the Pennsylvania Constitution. The Pennsylvania Constitution also protects our rights to clean air, pure water, and the scenic, aesthetic, and historic values of the environment. The municipal planning code requires a balancing of interests. And if in fact this board digs deeper into the areas where they might in the future allow fracking to occur, and you find that there are reasonable reasons not to allow fracking, the board could say there can be no more fracking, especially because you've already allowed it here. We're hearing that this is the law as though it's settled, but this is actually an open legal question. It hasn't been answered yet. It's a gray area. So let Range sue you. You can fight them, and if you lose, we'll come back for another round of this ordinance draft, but at least we'll all be proud of you.
He's going to tell you our deal.
And then I, one final point. I am a resident of Oakbrook Estates. I believe that I heard that the new map would keep activity away from my home, but I want to remind this board that they are accountable to all residents, not just people who live in HOAs. It's not enough to keep this industry to just industrial zones, which are located near lower-income residence neighborhoods. Setbacks protect everyone. Set them at 2,500 feet and let people waive that if they want to for themselves. Start with real protection as the standard because that's what we all deserve. Thank you.
Due to the late hour, the last speaker is going to be Ms. Blannock. I think she's the last one back there. And, okay, I see one more. Okay, you're the last one, okay? Because we're in close, we will have another hearing.
Well, last but not least, I have a perspective that's a little different for this hearing tonight. As Dave has expressed, he worked for the Tribune Review. Oh, my name is Jane Worthington, 723 Wildwood Drive. Dave has worked previously for the Tribune Review and I, or Trib, and I had the honor of working with him as one of the children that he wrote about with my own child. These setbacks...
Do you have any comments for the board?
Yes, these setbacks are not just important for the residents, but important for the children. My child was very young and she was benzene exposed. She was benzene exposed. It has been shown through the industry. The setbacks need to be moved back for everybody, especially for the vulnerable children. For many years, I've had a lot of experience traveling through the country, talking about pipelines, with the EP, the EPA, the Congress, the senators, community leaders, and even Indian tribes. We have pleaded, we have testified, we have brought studies. These studies have been ignored. These studies have been overlooked. Range Resources is a culprit for the safety and the health of citizens, especially those of young children. They may bring industry and they may bring income, but they also bring trouble. They bring health benefits, but also health-related disasters. My family is living that disaster. As a benzene-exposed child, my daughter was removed from a basketball game with purple hands and disqualified. This is not something you want to see. You can put all your operations back. It's been over 11 years I've been out testifying. It's a simple formula. Move back a mile, give a mother a smile. It's not hard to understand. Nursing homes, schools, homes, residents, newborn babies, teachers that have fertility issues, they all need protected. We can't put this near our schools. We can't put this near our residents. We do not have to frac every inch of America. We can spider out. There are things we can do to recover. We can write our ordinances. I feel sorry for the boards. I feel sorry for councils. I feel sorry for senators and governors who never saw this industry coming, and we were inadequately prepared to write the ordinances that we needed to write. It's been 11 years or more. It's more than overdue to rewrite these ordinances. This has pitted families and neighbors against each other. This is so much more than zoning, public safety, code enforcement, and environment. Those are all your responsibilities, but this is so much more. The revenue that we are receiving and the contributions we are getting is coming at too high of a cost. We need to look at who's already affected. We need to look at who is going to be affected. Worldwide, birth defects is on a rise. Worldwide, ADHD, autism, is all being related to environmental toxicity. I ask that you as supervisors and we as residents insist that these setbacks become truly, truly a high priority to protect children, our residents, and our own township. Thank you.
Over the past several weeks, I've canvassed the streets and hills of Cecil. I talked to many residents in our township, asking about their concerns, sharing information, and offering support. I talked to parents, grandparents, babysitters, teachers, and a retired minister. I talked to people who were unaware of the proposed oil and gas activity in our community and are now in disbelief. I also talked to many people that were angry. They moved to a beautiful new housing plan in Cecil, thinking they were getting away from industry, only to have it right in their backyard. I talked to people who were sick or have a loved one who is sick with cancer. I had a few that weren't interested in talking to me at all, but I also had people who worked in the industry or who work in the industry that said they don't want a well pad 1,000 feet from their home. Many residents believe that the builders, as well as the realtors, knew what was in the works all along. And I talked to people who knew my son Luke and some of the other kids from Cannon Mac, who we lost to Ewing sarcoma and other rare cancers. I have many family members and friends that I've talked to. I've talked to all these people out of love and concern. I talked so much that I lost my voice. Now, this board of supervisors is made up of five people. It appears that Darlene Barney and Bill Shifoni are on the side of industry. I'm guessing they profit from it. Correct me if I'm wrong. I have no legal expertise, but I think that that is a conflict of interest, as has been brought up before, and they should not be permitted to vote. As for Tom Cassiola, you've always seemed like a great guy, a decent person. My husband's family and yours goes back a long way. My mother-in-law was your babysitter. Some say that you cannot be trusted, but I choose to believe that they are wrong and that you will do the right thing to protect Cecil residents. Cindy Fisher, she admitted she was starried years ago when the industry rolled in with lots of promises in our community. Now she has seen the harms and the negative impacts. She told Range that she didn't want them to listen anymore, but wanted them to act. She is listening to the residents, and we thank you. That leaves us with you, Frank. You have said that you're a problem solver. Well, well, we have a huge problem here at Cecil, one that the residents are not at all happy about, and we are saying loud and clear, enough is enough. We need you to fix this problem. As our board of supervisors, you were elected to your positions to make decisions on what's best for our township, not your bank accounts, and carry them out. If you can't or won't do that, we, the residents, will respectfully be showing you the door. And lastly, I would urge the whole board and everybody in this room, especially the workers in the oil field, to read this book, Petroleum 238. Like Justin, it's written by Justin Noble, and the last sentence, he says, "My challenge to you is read it through to the end and realize, this is not a book about despair. To say it is to know it is to change it." He signed my book and told me to enjoy it, take away strength and power. Use it as a tool and run, run far, and run I will. So thank you, Justin. And as far as the contributions from Range Resources and all their charitable donations, no amount of money will bring my son back. So thank you all for listening.
Were you ahead of AC?
He wasn't there before. We have time, let him talk.
Hi, my name's William Shifoni, Sr., 1808 State Route 980, Kansburg, Pennsylvania. I just heard a remark, and I don't know how many people understand what's going on here, but the Shifoni name is a big name in the oil and gas, which we are not a part of. So I don't know, I know this guy in the green thought that probably, you know, he was blaming Junior there about this. We are absolutely not involved in this. And I just wanted to clarify that because it kind of pissed me off that you brought that up. Maybe somebody else up here is, you know, with the board, I don't know. I'm not involved in that, but definitely we are not. So, thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Ready? And go! Okay, so I've got AC rolling, 52 Sycamore Street, just type me in as the troublemaker. Okay, I got four questions. We'll go over them real quick, then you guys can answer them or not or tell me, kick bricks. How much is enough when we're, when we're just, like the other people said, when is the limit on these well pads? So they can come back, five well pads, they've got 111 that the one website touted, and then 68, then 64. How many permits? So on the next map, I'd like to see dots or something of all of the existing well pads and all of the existing permitted areas that we're grandfathering in, that they're at the state right now. Range is trying to get that grandfathered in before any more changes happen. Two, how many well caps, how many uncapped wells do we have in Cecil Township? And what are they doing to cap them? Are they using the wastewater for the low-volume wells? There was a big article, the news crews were out, they're finding them everywhere. I'd like some information because those are creating a lot of health issues, and they're just uncapped, they're not all documented, but I think on Channel 4 News, they were up to 280,000 here in our area. So I'd like to see some information on that. And then I know that she gave us a few of the numbers, but is there anywhere that we can list exactly how much money our township gets from having these well operators, whether it's Range, CXP, anybody? How much money comes into our township through this industry? Not the entire area. I can find the entire area. I cannot find ours.
It's a line item budget on our budget, so you can have it easily.
Can you release that and post it?
It's on the website, AC.
Okay.
I can help you find it.
And then last Wednesday, there was a big issue. DEP nailed Range with nine violations. There's some debate, oh, well, they were using freshwater to wash off the poly road. Oh, well, it was only limited contamination into our stream. So I looked into this. So let's say that they used their water trucks, that they take the contaminated out. Per a meeting that was at the Capitol two weeks ago, one of the people that was talking on the steps, that was his job, was to clean out those trucks. The sludge left in the bottom of those trucks are some of the most heavy metal and contaminated parts of what they pull out. So if they take that truck, fill it full of freshwater, how fresh is that water now that they just sprayed into our stream? And I want to know, on that 14-page report, how come we didn't have any follow-up? All we get is the laughing stock page telling us it's all BS. It was freshwater, they were washing gravel down. It doesn't matter if it goes into the stream. The solution to pollution is dilution. So I'd like some answers on that.
If we can, we'll get them.
What?
If we can answer them, we'll get them. Some of them have to come from the state.
And then finally, just one clear-up thing. We're doing a fun day of muse, and there's been some concern that Range Resource employees and families are not welcome. That's a complete lie. Any person is welcome to come and see what we're doing and to help our volunteer fire departments, police departments, and first responders get some much-needed anti-choking LifeVACs into their trucks, cars, and vehicles to help protect us all. And one final thing, I found, LifeVAC called me today. Anytime that any of our responders use one of their units, they replace it with a new one for life.
Can the board members have any comments? Any board members have any comments before we close the hearing?
Can I say something?
Sure.
I just want to take the time to thank you all for being here. I know that a lot of you have families, children, other things that you could have been doing. It was a beautiful day, and I recognize that this is three hours of your night that you probably wouldn't, would rather spend doing something else, but I can't tell you how much it matters to be in this room, for us to hear from all of you. And so a huge thank you from myself... And so, a huge thank you from myself and the board members for taking the time to be here tonight.
(inaudible). Yeah, you can go to whoever you want. You just can vote.
We are going to schedule another hearing. I think it's going to be on June, what's the first? June 5th?
Is that the first Wednesday?
First Wednesday, yes. And we will have an updated map, and we're going to get it out as quickly as we can so you have it, to have as much time to review it as we can get you. So, having said that, we're going to reconvene this hearing on June 5th at 6 o'clock.